All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order the City of Crescent City City Council on February 16th, 2015. We're coming out of closed session. I think we can dispense. Well, let's see, well, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Councilmember Hawley?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Short?
Here.
Pro-TEN Inscore?
Here.
Mayor Gasnow?
Here. And definitely have to report, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. All right, and I will lead everybody in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and honor. Thank you. All right, we have no acknowledgements. We do have items on our consent calendar. We have one, approval of the regular meeting minutes from the February 1st, 2016 council meeting. Receive and file the warrant claims list for the period January 23rd, 2016 through February 5th, 2016. Receive and file the bi-weekly payroll report for the periods ending February 6th, 2016, paid on February 12th, 2016. Number four, approve and adopt resolution number 2016 dash oh-one, a resolution of the city council of the City of Crescent City amending the conflict of interest codes, code for the City of Crescent City effective January 20th, 2016. Five, authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with Stover Engineering for the completion of plans and specifications for the wastewater treatment plant mechanical room electrical system isolation project in the not to exceed amount of 12,206. Approve and adopt the 2016 City of Crescent City Strategic Plan. Yes, ma'am.
Could we, Mr. Mayor, pull item number six?
Item number six.
And number five, Mr. Mayor.
And number five. Well, first, I want to get any public comment on the consent calendar. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Okay, you see, no public comment. I have items five and six being polled. Is there a motion to adopt items one through four?
Move to approve, one through four.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve items one through four on the consent calendar. Can you please pull the vote? In a second.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-TEN Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and we'll go in order. So, Mr. Short, you wanted to pull the item number five.
If I could ask Mr. Weir a question about this project?
Yes, Mr. Weir, please.
I'm aware that this is a much-needed project separating the electrical panels. I'm wondering if there's gonna be any moving of the panels themselves? Is that part of this project, or are we just partitioning off? It seems like an awful lot of money for just partitioning off the panels. Could you expand on that a little?
Well, it is. So, it's partitioning off the panels, but there's a lot of nuances with this particular scenario because of the catwalks and whatnot that were built. And so, in order to isolate them, it's isolating them and also doing a bit of a rehab on them. It's coating them so that the corrosion doesn't continue, so that we do get as long a life as we can out of this. So, there is gonna be the coating. There's also the isolation of not only MCCs, but also the SCADA equipment that's there. This is gonna be in the not to exceed amount of the $12,000.
Thank you. In that project, are we moving the electrical equipment at all, or has it pretty much stayed on that wall?
It's gonna stay on that wall. If we had to move the electrical equipment, you know, the construction cost would go up tremendously. So, that's where we're gonna try to do what we can, keep everything there, and just partition it off, so that we get it in an environment where we can get the life that we need out of that equipment.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Weir for item number five?
So, you anticipate being able to do the construction phase for the remaining $30,000?
That is the hope at this point. But, you know, we'll know a lot more after we get the final design done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to accept item number five?
I move to approve.
Sir, second.
I'll second that motion.
All right, please pull that vote.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-TEN Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, thank you, and that is approved unanimously. Excuse me. Ms. Murray, you pulled item number six.
This is just a minor recommendation. I would like to add to our values the word transparency. I know that we have it in our Goal Three under A as transparency, but I believe that transparency is a value that we should identify in our strategic plan. So, that's just a minor recommendation, and I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, but I feel that it's a value that is important to the city and to our community.
I would think that honesty would cover that, but transparency is one of the words that we do man year-round a lot. So, I don't think that would be a bad thing. What about the rest of the council? So, just a question then. You want to add to the values section the word transparency?
On the front of the strategic plan.
On the front, okay. And I would assume that we add it to all the rest of our, whenever we mention our values.
Well, we do have it in our Goal Three, but we don't come in our actual values. We don't have it in our actual values under strategic plan. We have vision, mission, and values, and I believe transparency is an important value that we should identify in the strategic plan.
All right, go ahead and make a motion for that.
So, I will read.
Oh, yeah. Any public comment on adding transparency to our values for the city? I didn't get the public comment on the last one.
Here we go.
There you go. All right, thank you.
I'm sorry, I can't pass this up. I find it laughable that Councilwoman Catherine Murray would talk about transparency when she's one of the co-authors that censured me when I brought up alleged graph fraud and corruption on the wastewater treatment plant, and the censure was not lifted till the treatment plant was fixed. So, I have a problem believing her when she talks about transparency. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, so go ahead and make your motion now.
I'll make a motion to add values to, in our strategic plan, to the, add transparency in the values section of our strategic plan.
And adopt it with that change.
Yeah, and adopt the rest of strategic, and adopt the rest of strategic plan under item six that was on the consent calendar.
Great. Sir, second.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to add transparency to the values section and also adopt it with that change our 2016 strategic plan. Could you please pull the vote?
Certainly. Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-TEN Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor, could I take a quick second and just thank Lori Menzel for her work on the graphic artist section of that?
Yes, you may.
She did a great job.
Thank you.
Looks really nice.
Since we pulled it, that's awesome. Good job. Looks great. And it's just available in all our offices, right? And online?
It will be after the update is made.
Thank you. All right, we have no reports or presentations. We do come to our communications with the public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that was within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any general public comment or anything about on the agenda? Okay, see, no public comment. I'll close public comment, and now we will adjourn to the housing authority. We'll dispense with roll call. Let's see, we have reports, presentations done. We do have public comment period. Is there any public comment for the housing authority? Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment. We'll go to the consent calendar. We have two items. One, approval of the regular meeting minutes from January 19th, 2016. Approval of the warrant claims from January 19th, 2016 through February 5th, 2016. Is there any public comment on the housing authority consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Bring you back to the council. Is there any discussion?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please pull the vote.
Board Member Hawley?
Yes.
Board Member Murray?
Yes.
Board Member Short?
Yes.
Vice Chair Inscore?
Yes.
Chair Gasnow?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. There is no further business for the housing authority, so we will adjourn from the housing authority until a regularly scheduled meeting of March 21st, 2016. We will now adjourn to the Crescent City Successor Agency, to the redevelopment agency. Call it to order. We don't need a roll call. No reports or presentations. Is there any public comment for the successor agency? Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment. We have one item on our consent calendar, and it's approval of the regular meeting minutes from January 19th, 2016. Is there any public comment on the consent calendar for the successor agency? Nope. Seeing no public comment, I'll close public comment.
Move to approve.
Move to approve. Consent calendar, I have a second.
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. Please pull the vote.
Board Member Hawley?
Yes.
Board Member Murray?
Yes.
Board Member Short?
Yes.
Vice Chair Inscore?
Yes.
Chair Gasnow?
Yes. All right, there is no further business for the successor agency. We will adjourn back to the city council until a regularly scheduled successor agency meeting March 21st, 2016. Okay, public hearings, number nine. Hold a public hearing. Receive a report from the city clerk on the received number of written protests and consider, waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt ordinance number 792 of the City Council of the Crescent, City of Crescent City amending the Crescent City Municipal Code Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13.30, sewer charges to add sections 13.30.02, excuse me, 020 through 13.30.023 pertaining to wastewater service charges. Take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Knight?
Thank you, Mayor Gasnow, council members. I'd like to ask our public works director, Eric Weir, to give us a brief background, and then I believe he's going to turn it over to our city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Gasnow, members of the council. Yes, I will keep this brief as this is the second reading of this ordinance, but this is the culmination of a multi-year effort in which staff and the other consultants that assisted us creating this financial plan spent many hours, hundreds of hours, working on this. And what is before you is a financial plan that it will right-size the sewer fund for many years to come, for at least the next five years. The financial plan includes many components. It includes a revenue analysis, which takes a look at our operating and maintenance budget, takes a look at our current fund balance, takes a look at our capital improvement plan, and takes a look at our debt service. This project, or this financial plan, also includes many other things, some of which are in the grants that the city has received. The city has received over $4 million in grants over the last couple of years. That directly goes into saving the ratepayers from paying those costs. The city also, in conjunction with some of the consultants that we have hired, received an unprecedented action from the State Water Resource Control Board. This was the fact that they reduced the loan from 2.4% interest down to 0%. They also did a financial shaping of the debt service, so where we can get back on our feet and be able to, be able to pay that debt service off. The reshaping of the loan and the reduction in the interest rate totals almost $15 million of savings to this community. In that revenue analysis, the financial plan has an increase of 5% in the revenue for the next four years. It also took a look at the way the rates were structured. So, it was before the council, and the council authorized staff to proceed with a consumption-based rate model. So, that consumption base is a switch from what we currently have. We currently have a flat-based rate for residential services. This consumption base is a change, and it's a change that is a more equitable rate structure. The, what it goes to is a consumption base for residential, which means basically you pay for what you use. So, there'll be a flat rate of approximately $45, and then from there, you'll get charged for every 100 cubic feet of water that you use, whereas currently residential is simply flat. It doesn't matter how much you use or how little you use, you pay the same. So, this new rate structure, you'll pay for what you use. With that, unless there's any questions from the council for myself, I'll turn it over to Kimmy Scott, city clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Weir. Ms. Scott?
Mayor Gasnow, members of the council, good evening. As of 3:00 PM this afternoon, I have received 2,012 protests. We did a preliminary review of 300 of those protests and showed an average 7% invalidation based on failure to include the required elements of the protest. Because of those figures, it led me to cease the preliminary review at that point, as it is apparent to me that we will need to do a full validation process. So, I request at this time that you ask for public comment and ask that all final protests and withdrawals be submitted, and allow me a brief five-minute recess to calculate those.
Thank you. Okay. So, we are now, we heard our staff report, we heard our announcement of protests received, and we are now gonna go into public comment. We're opening up this public hearing about sewer rates. Who would like to go first? There you go. Please step on up. Three minutes is your time.
Go forth boldly.
All right.
Good evening, I am Tamara Layton. I am a city resident, and I am here to encourage you to support the consumption-based rates. I believe they are more fair, sustainable, and long-term affordable to the city residents. The consumption-based rates, rate structure with winter averaging for sewer rates is far more fair and sustainable than the current flat rate structure. The city is just recovering from costly impacts of delayed maintenance, and I encourage you to address the maintenance problems now before you, and then we are charged for noncompliance and dilapidation. As a fiscal conservator for a young adult with disabilities living in the city, I understand the delicate balance of very limited income and living expenses. I believe that the city's winter averaging proposal will prove to be fair for all. We can grow a garden without unfairly impacting our sewer rates. I think it's wise. Sewer system failure will always be more expensive than maintenance, and if you've ever painted your house to prevent home damage, you'll understand that the proposed consumption-based rate structure to maintain the wastewater treatment plant is long-term fair. Additionally, I encourage the city to elevate the modifications necessary to greatly reduce or eliminate the smell to city residents, as I think that if residents could experience any direct improvement, then the consumption-based rates would have an observable and immediate benefit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Westfall, I'm a city resident, and I'm handing in an additional 10 protests along with some notes, and I'd like, my copy's date-stamped, and there's one that was not In addition, I'm representing as president of the Crescent City Delnarc County Taxpayers Association, that the consumption-based rates were discussed seven, eight years ago with the city, and at that time, we were told it was not possible, even though other areas were doing it. Now, it's possible, but with a 20% increase. If you had approved the consumption-based rates without the 20% increase, the taxpayers' association would have been behind you. Now, the problem that existed seven, eight years ago still exists today, and that problem is you have a loan that's twice the amount that this customer base can afford. In the past, I have repeatedly asked why the loan amount jumped from 19.6 million to 43.8 mil in a three-month period of time. The answers were always unsatisfactory. Well, I'm now in possession of documents that makes sense to me. Those documents described that for each dollar the rate was raised, the city could borrow $1 million. Even so, doubling the rates still was not going to work. So, after three years, the city went into default on their loan, and this was all predicted. And that's basically what I have to say tonight.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make public comment? Please, come on up.
Good evening, I'm John Mike Colliano. I live in the county, own my own home, 63 years old. I did my budget the other day, and this is just letting you know a general consensus of what, how I feel about the water bill or any of the expenses that we occur in our lives at this point. I have no more opportunity to make any more money than what I am currently making, and neither is my wife. The job base here is at the best, part-time. $10 an hour, 10 and a quarter an hour. I know I worked for a couple of years for Home Depot. I made $270 a week. My wife works part-time, no chance of getting on full-time at the school because they're not hiring there. Our base of finances have flatlined. Our finances, where output is more, I spend $2,200 and some dollars a month to flatline. I have no car payments, no other payments. I have no credit card debt. My house payment is $511 with insurance and taxes on it. Very low base of outgoing. We don't spend a whole lot of money. In the last couple of months, our grocery bill has gone from $100 a week to $125. I'm a very thrifty shopper. Why I'm saying this is because this bill goes up, our electric goes up, our taxes go up, something else goes up, our food goes up, other things all around us go up. Unfortunately for us, at 63 years old, we don't have the ability to keep up. I have Social Security flatlined. I'm surprised they got that. But the reality is, I'm not mad, I'm just very concerned about my future. I love this place. I've been here four years, and out of the four years I've been here, three years the water company has told me in a row that they're gonna raise the rates. After a while, I think the public gets a little tired of hearing that every year, you're gonna raise the rates. It would just be good at somewhere along the line that we, that we were considered, maybe the older people in the community are considered, that we pay our own bills, I do not receive food stamps, I've received no assistance, I am not on welfare. I pay my own payments. We've worked hard all of our lives since I've been 15 years old. It just comes to a place where we get a little bit frustrated with life, and every time we hear that something is gonna go up, something in the inside of me just gets a little frustrated again. And I look at my wife, and I says, "Well, one of these days, we're just gonna have to sell our home and move into our fifth wheel." That is not the future that I want to see for my life and for my wife. I don't know what else to say other than, I'm just concerned about where this is all going, and is anybody considering the overall fluctuation of the economy that we're in? Thank you.
Anybody else want a public comment? Please, come on up. State your name and your city or county resident.
Hi, my name's Heather Murphy. I'm out there in the county, and I've lived here for three years, but raised here as a child. I've watched the city grow and change for many, many years. I am a renter in the county, and I do not have a say. I feel that's very unfair among very other people I have talked to throughout the community. Therefore, I think us renters, as our rent goes up, we have to pay it, or we're out homeless. We have no homeless shelters. We have nowhere to go, but we have no say. So, where do we go from there?
Thank you. Okay, come on up.
Charles Willett, Crescent City, California. Okay, so, I was working for the taxpayers' association. I was out front of the water department. I was asked to get the full scoop of the realities before I got any more signatures.
Okay.
So, I did a little digging. "Sir, how much water do you use? Do you know the new system will be based on winter rates, and you will use now, you pay for now what you use? So, 43% of people's rates are gonna go down. Only 47 are gonna go up. You know, California just forgave us a $3.5 million?"
Sir, could you address us?
Okay, I mean, they forgave us a $3.5 million. You know, not everybody's sewer rates is gonna go on, go down as, you know, they're gonna do 20% over four years. And right now, they're based on the 500, where everybody pays the same, where everybody, should they pay the same? Or should the elderly, the single family pay less than you because you use more? That makes sense to me. I don't think the elderly person should have to pay for what others are using. Why not pay for what he's using? It's a fair system. You know, for years and years, this city did not have an increase in a sewer rate. Why the economy went up? So, don't that mean we got a decrease? All I know is I wanna go forward, not backwards. You know what my toilet is? 'Cause I'm homeless. It is a porta potty. I got dumped my own toilet. Do you guys wanna go back to the 1800s? Because it starts with a flush. Crescent City has 21 lists that has to get it to the sewer plant. I mean, they're trying not to make your sewer bills go up, and the elderly, the single family, the people that live by yourself, yours is gonna go down. It's gonna be based on a $45.68 rate, and then you're gonna pay for what you use. Do you wanna pay for what somebody else is using, or do you want a fair system? I say we have a fair system. Right now, we're getting on track to go forward. If you don't let us go forward, all we're gonna do is go backwards, and we're all gonna be dumping our own buckets. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else would like to do a public comment?
Yes.
Please, come on up.
I'm Michael A. Bear. I live at A Street, 336 A Street, just down the street from Mr. Gritten. I voted for you. The problem I'm having is that I'm a little older than I look. I am on fixed income. My wife gets a whopping $400 from Social Security 'cause she was a mother all her life. That one is not your problem here, I understand. But the whole water thing, sewer thing, since I've been living here, we got dinged for a new sewer plant that we really needed. Not a problem. But when it was built, we were promised it would fix problems that it didn't fix. The cost of it went over budget. We got dinged for that. Not a whole lot of complaining going on for my house, and I keep watching it go, and now I'm hearing a 5% increase for the next three years, just like the other gentleman there. I'm on fixed income now. I've worked for the county. Even with my PERS and Social Security that I get, adding to my problem doesn't help. Yeah, I might qualify for the lesser use than the 90-something I'm spending a month for the water and sewer now. Probably not. It's kinda like any other benefit in this county. I make like $200 more than I can qualify for anything. We're stuck. We cannot afford to pay for a mistake that was made on this sewer plant that we were promised was gonna fix these problems. In the old days, if I built something for you and it didn't work, I came back for free and fixed it. What's going on? I'm not a real intelligent man, but I know there's something wrong here. I'm not a real intelligent man, but I know there's something wrong here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make public comment, please? Yes, please, come on up.
I'm Jerry Park. I own property here. And I'm just curious how they came up with these rates. It says that, when I was at the water company, they didn't pay my water bill or my sewer bill because I have a well, so I'm not on the water. So my rates are going to go up 30% the first month, first year, not 5%. How is that fair? Who figured this out, that if you're on a well, you're going to use at least 500 cubic feet of water? Where do they come up with this figure? And it says that 50% of the people here are going to go with a lower rate. That means, to me logically, that 50% of the people are going to have to pay more money to make up for the reduced rates, plus you want an increase. So the 50% of the people are going to pay a lot more than what they're paying now. That's not fair. How can you judge how much water somebody uses if they have a well? How can you say, "Well, they're going to be 500"? You know, where do you come up with that number? Like I said, my rates are going to go up 29% the first year. That's not fair, you know? I think the only fair way to do it would be to either go by bed, number of bedrooms, or number of bathrooms that people use, because that's the amount of water that you're really recycling, you know? If you use water to irrigate a garden or something, you shouldn't be charged for that. But if you're going by the amount of water that people are using, you're charging people for whatever they use it for. They wash their car, they're paying, they're not using the sewer system for that. So that's not fair, you know? Normally, like with a building permit, you go by a number of bedrooms or by the number of bathrooms. That's kind of generally how it works. So that would be more, to me, more fair. Instead of this rate increase of, like I say, 29% from mine for the first year, and then 5% the next couple of years after that. So, I don't know. I just think that whoever came up with this idea, that they weren't, something's not right, you know? That 50% of the people are going to have to make up for the other 50% that are going to get a reduction, plus they're going to have to make up for whatever increase they're trying to get, you know? How's that fair? I mean, is that what this is all about, trying to make it fair? Or is this just to say, you know, I don't know what this meeting is all about? I get this thing in the mail, and it says that, well, it doesn't even have this year's on there, so I don't know what they figured for this year. It's 2016. But for 2017, it's 29%, and another 5%, another 5%, another 5% after that. I don't know where it ends, you know? I'm not sure who's responsible for this. I've only been here for a couple of years, so I don't know what went on, why this thing was over budget, or what happened.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments. We can get somebody to talk to you about our rate structure.
All right.
Thank you. Other public comment, please?
Ray Colby. I live 640 Cooley Avenue, out of the city limits. And I've been coming down here now, I think it's the last six or eight months I've come down here for the same thing, to protest this sewer rate. I think they were having a cost of living increase then. Now this is a cost of living increase for you, not for me. It's a decrease because I'm going to be paying more money. It's going to cost me somewhere around $7 more a month. In 1980, when I went on the sewer plant, I was paying zip. Then when I went on it, it went up from 1980-some, I can't remember exact dates, but today, I'm paying 60-some dollars a month. Next month, or whenever this is implemented, and I know it's going to be, because there isn't enough people around here, it's going to protest it and raise hell with it, excuse my language. And so it's going to go up to $7 more. So it's up to $70 a month. Now, we've got to come in here every six or eight months and talk to you people, try to keep this down. By the time I'm, I'm 80, almost 80 now, by the time I'm 85, I'm going to owe you people $150 a month just to use my sewer. I don't think it's right. I don't think it's right at all. Especially when the economy isn't any better now than it was back in 1985, or 89, excuse me. They were making the same amount of money today as they were making then. And it's not going anywhere today. Back then, it went someplace. So my cost of living is just going down. Every month you people raise something, we go down. Why don't we get together and say, "Hey, if you need something for this sewer plant, and Joe Blow down the street has got it for sale for $10, hey, George back here's got it for sale for $8. I'll go buy it from George. And if Joe wants to sell his product, he's going to do something with it. He's going to lower the price of it." But you people jump right in there and say, "I'm going to buy this right now." You've got to do it right now. You can't wait. You can't negotiate anywhere. You've got to negotiate this world. And we've got to get the economy down." I'm getting hot, excuse me. But there's a lot of things I haven't said, I didn't want to say too much. But I did see a comment in the paper. I don't know if it's right or not. But if we've got to keep coming in here every six or eight months to negotiate our rates for sewer, our sewer people, excuse me, I'm not picking on them, are not doing their job. Because most businesses, and this is a business, running this sewer, running the counties, running the state, running the city, and the city is a business. You people are in business to run this city. You have to allow a little expenses, just like we did in the old days. Add a little money in case breakdowns and stuff that you need. You can't just keep coming back and say, "Hey, let's do this now." You can't do it. It's going to have to go down. And we just can't, we just can't continue to pay these inflated races when our rates are going down all the time. And people that are working for us is making hundreds of thousands of dollars a year wages, and we're making nothing. Where are you going to get the money? Raise the sewer rates. That's where they're coming from. Raise the sewer rates. Raise the water rates. Raise all these rates. That's how you're going to live. That's enough.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Okay. We have received all the public comment. I'm going to close it up. I'm going to do a last call for any protests, excuse me, any protests or any withdrawals of protest, if anybody wants to take back a protest that they put in, possibly inadvertently. Seeing none, I will do, close my last call, and I'm going to close this public hearing. And then, excuse me. Apparently, our city clerk would like to go back. Are we going to take a recess, or?
Could you give me just five minutes?
Okay, so that would be good, give me a chance to clear my throat. We will take a five-minute recess for her to go back and examine some of the stuff that came in. All right, so we'll be back here at a quarter till 7:00, so 6:45. Okay, we have reconvened the meeting. We're going to talk to our city clerk. Ms. Scott, your report.
So I received an additional 11 protests this evening, bringing the total number of purported protests to 2,023. At this time, I request that the city council continue this item until the next regular city council meeting on March 7, 2016, to allow us time to do a full validation of all the protests, beginning tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. at the wastewater treatment plant. I also request that the mayor ask for members of the public who wish to be public witnesses to submit their names for a random drawing of two people to witness the validation process.
All right, thank you, Ms. Scott. And where would you like them to enter their names? Would like to call for anybody who would like to, how long do you think the validation process will take? It's a time commitment for anybody who wishes to do it.
In the past, apparently, this has taken two to three days.
Two to three days, watching the city clerk count and validate these protest votes. Would anybody like to put their name in for that? We have a little, all right, there's one. All right, come on up here to the clerk. Anybody else want to?
I have some to say.
Well, we're already closed public hearing, Connie, sorry.
Well, you don't have, there's no time, an hour before this meeting.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry too.
I am too. Okay, anybody else would like to witness the validation process? Well, hey, there we go.
There we go.
Donna, I was going to have you actually draw the names, too.
Me, me also.
Okay. So, thank you, Ms. Westfall, for stepping up and volunteering to watch the process. When is that going to happen? Ms. Scott?
It will begin tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. at the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay. So, Ms. Westfall is the only one that we have received, and that was the one that we will take. Everybody else has lost their chance to do that. Because we don't want too many people in there. All right, there we go. We've got another one. All right, please put your name right over here. Thank you for stepping up. Okay, so, Connie, you going to put your name in? No, you can't speak, Connie. The public hearing is closed. Thank you.
If you put your name in.
Right. I have to draw now. Donna, I need your help. Oh, you never mind. Never mind. Thank you, Donna. I was gonna have you draw the two names. Thank you very much. All right, so, we have our two public witnesses that will be there at the validation process. And we'll come back to council discussion. Do you wanna have a discussion, or you wanna wait until the next meeting? Okay, the council declined to discuss. We'll wait till we see what the validation. So, we do not adopt.
We need a motion to continue this item to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, I make a motion that we continue ordinance 792 of the city council of city of Crescent City, amending the Crescent City Municipal Code Title 13, Public Services Chapter 13.30 Sewer Charges to add sections 13.30.020 through 13.30.023 pertaining to wastewater service charges until our next regularly scheduled meeting.
On March 7th?
On March 7th.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to the March 7th meeting. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Proton Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gaston?
Yes, thank you, and that will be continued to our March 7th meeting. We do now go on to item number 10, continuing business, and I thank the rest of you for sticking around for this. Number 10, consider for authorization the city manager to sign an agreement with Coleman Engineering Incorporated for engineering services and required environmental documents as part of the final United States Department of Agricultural USDA Rural Development Application for the 2015 Water System Improvements Project in the not-to-exceed amount of $119,437. Mr. Knight, you gonna hand it off to Mr. Weir?
Yes, I am. My job's pretty easy.
All right.
But we are gonna hand it off to our public works director.
All right, Mr. Weir, thank you.
All right, Mayor Gaston, members of the council. So, this item is the next step in the city's process of obtaining a USDA loan slash grant and completing the loan slash grant application. So, what's before tonight is to approve the city manager to sign an agreement with the consulting firm that will complete the PER and the environmental portions of the loan application. So, the PER is the preliminary engineering report that's required by USA. It involves a basic study of the projects that are before us. Just to give the council a quick reminder of the projects, it's a redundant transmission main on Kings Valley Road, which will eliminate a major gap in our, in our infrastructure, in which we currently only have one cast iron main that was built in 1958. That's between the, approximately anyway, the chlorination building and the, and the elevated tank. It's actually a spot somewhere on, on Kings Valley there, about 7,500 feet. It's a redundant main along Blackwell to entertie the, the current 24-inch main, transmission main, and the, the 12-inch main on railroad. It is to do rehab on the Washington and Amador tanks, and it's also to install a remote metering system for our water meters, which would increase efficiencies as well as, as well as safety and billing of the water system. So, part of this contract is for them to evaluate each of those projects. They'll take a look at the, at the cost estimate for each project. They'll take a look at alternative routes. They'll do the preliminary engineering that's required for the, for the final application, as well as complete the environmental doc that is, that's required for each of those projects. The city put out an RFP. We received four proposals back on this project. The, the selection committee, which was comprised of myself, city public works director, we have Tom Romesberg, the utility manager for the city, we had Emily Boyd, the city's finance director, we had Lori Adams, who is our USDA funding consultant, and then we had Michael Young, who's a, who's a private engineer, very familiar with our water system. That was the selection committee. We went through each of the proposals. We scored them based on the criteria that was in the RFP. We narrowed it down to three top firms. The three top firms were interviewed at the, at the wastewater treatment plant. The selection panel came to a consensus, and we are recommending Coleman Engineering for the, for the job.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Weir?
No, no real questions, I don't think, at this point, Mr. Weir. I, I do wanna say that as we proceed with the discussion, in the interest of transparency, I wanna say that I'd met with Mr. Ward Stover about two and a half weeks ago. And I understand he, he maybe, he would have played a role in the Kennedy Jinks proposal. And, and Mr. Stover and I did meet, and I may be speaking to that in the near future.
That's correct. And also, let me just say, this, this is never an easy process when you go through this. All the proposals that we received were from competent engineering firms, all of which could have performed this job. That was the first consensus that the selection committee came to, is basically all could complete this. So, then it went into deliberations on which firm would be the best fit for the project, and that's where the selection committee came up with Coleman.
And I, too, met with Mr. Stover on January 26th. I'd just like to say congratulations to Stover Engineering for receiving, was it a national award that you received? State award for your engineering work, and I just wanna say congratulations and recognize you here at the city council meeting for that. But I did, too, met with him, and I also received an email from Mr. Stover on Sunday, February 14th. So, I've had a couple of correspondence with him, so I wanted to identify that. And I do have a question for you regarding the scoring process with the, each of the RFPs. So, could you kind of go through that rather briefly, so we don't drag it out too quickly, too long, but explain how each firm, how they differentiated and how you ended up identifying Coleman as the engineering firm that was recommended?
Sure. So, it was a two-step process. The first step was evaluating the written proposals that we received from each firm. So, in the RFP, it laid out selection criteria in which we scored each of the proposals. It had the, the competency of the proposal itself, whether it included all the information that we needed, their experience with USDA funding, their experience with performing these engineering projects that were before them, the project team and their experience that, that they each had in trying to complete a project like this. So, based on that criteria, each proposal was scored by the, by the evaluators. Those proposals were, were then compiled. We selected the top three firms for interviews. We went through an interview process in which each firm had roughly approximately 90 minutes, in which they gave their oral proposal on how they would complete the project. There was a question and answer period from each of the panel members to each of the consultants, at which time, after the interviews were completed, the selection committee got together. We discussed each of the proposals, as well as the, the interview, and basically ranked the firms in the order that, that we would like them. On a panel like this, obviously, there's, it was a diverse panel. You had engineers, you had utility manager with expertise in operating the utility, you had financial people, you had funding people. So, with a process like this, there wasn't a clear number one that, that immediately popped out. It was after discussion that we came to Coleman as a consensus for the, for the recommended firm.
So, but, but you, each one of you ranked each firm separately, and then you came to consensus with the ranking?
Yes, we did. So, we, we basically, the proposals were, were scored, and those were, those were ranked by, by numbers to, to select the top three. Then we interviewed each of the firms.
Right.
You know, with an interview process, you, you really get to know the team members. You get to have an understanding of how they're going to be able to complete the project and what you're looking for.
Right.
And then after that was over, then basically, we came together, discussion, ranked from each evaluation which turn, which team that we thought was number one, number two, and number three. And from there, after scoring those, we came to the consensus that Coleman would be the recommendation.
Okay, but each one of you, in the oral interview, ranked the, the firms separately yourselves, and then you?
Yes, we, after the interviews were complete, we got together and basically went to a whiteboard and listed them out, one, two, and three.
Did you combine the written and the oral rankings together and then discussed it?
Yes, it was, yeah, it was an overall consensus at that, at that point. So, you had your proposal, they were scored. We just completed the interview, so the combination of, of basically of both, you know, was what we were trying to rank on the board.
Right. So, how close was the scoring? I mean, was it like a?
Scoring, scoring any sort of consultant proposal is subjective to, to the raider themselves. You know, it's just, it all depends, you know, some, some graders are hard, and you might score the low firm in, say, the thirties, and the high, high firm in the hundreds, and other people will rank, you know, the top firm 99, and the low firm, say, 94. So, so it's, you don't really go by the score, and what you do is you, then you rank which one in order one, two, and three, and four. And from there, that's where we came to the consensus. And that way, it throws out some of the subjectiveness. You just have your, your top-ranked team and your, and your last-ranked team.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand. I've been on a lot of interview panels and whatnot, and so I'm just trying to understand how this process worked, so.
That's how this process works. We ranked those top three firms. If you look at the ranking, you assign, say, you know, one point for the number one ranked team, and two points for the number two, and three points for the number three. Basically, the lowest score is your top-ranked firm, and that's, that's what came out of this process, and Coleman Engineering was the top-ranked firm.
Okay, but how great of a difference between that and, say, the other two?
They, you know, it's, when you're only scoring, say, one, two, and three, you know, you had basically, they were, they were close. You, you have, if you, if you looked at that ranking, Coleman ended up with eight points, Laco with 10, and Kennedy Jinks with 13.
But the, the lower the score, the, the better the ranking?
Correct.
Okay, that seems counterintuitive, but okay.
Well, it's, I mean, you could do it either way, but yeah.
Okay, all right. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand it. So, okay, thank you.
Mr. Weir, you're looking at, this is phase one that we're talking about, the award.
Correct.
Typically, this same engineering firm, Coleman, or, or any firm that would have been awarded phase one, typically does the other two project?
Typically, how this is set out is the engineering firm that's selected for phase one, which is this PER and environmental phase. The city would then enter into negotiations with them for phase two, which would be the, the PSNE, the, the completion of the plan specification and estimate. And then if, if the project is proceeding, and we have USDA funding, and the project moves forward, then we would try and negotiate with them for phase three as well, which would be construction management. Again, all depending on, on the negotiations, and if we can come to terms with a, with the required amount of hours and, and cost.
I need to echo the communications that was, was had between myself and, and Mr. Stover also. So, I started looking after that at the, at the three companies that were. Yes, but I'll move it closer. Thank you. I started looking at the three companies that were interviewed. Laco being relatively local, Eureka, Ukiah, Santa Rosa-based company. Kennedy Jinks partnered with Stover. Kennedy Jinks is quite large, covering most of the western United States. But, but Coleman kinda stuck out as, I don't know, the most inconvenient company, almost the furthest away, and only having a, an office in Roseville. It just seems if, if they were gonna work for us. It doesn't, it, on the surface, it doesn't seem like they would be able to service the project or give us a good service for the project. And I think that's where the line of questioning is coming from, that I just wonder how, how Coleman came about. It, it just seems odd.
You know, again, it was a, it was a diverse panel. All three firms were, were evaluated as being capable of completing this project.
And that's part of what makes it difficult, is it, and you say that in your report, is that all of them are capable, but we picked the furthest one away.
You know, not faulting the panel.
You see where I'm going, is that it seems, it just seems odd.
And, you know, Coleman's location is, was brought up. You know, they, they, they don't have a, a local component. Although to complete a project like this, and, you know, as well as many engineering projects, it's, it's definitely favorable to have that local presence, but not necessarily required. They, they will have to schedule their trips. They'll have to, and they included that in their scope of work. They, they're both, the lead project people on this are, are private pilots, and they said they'd be willing to fly up here really at any time, and it's, you know, it's only a, only an hour flight. So, that's, that's how they address that particular portion.
Also, moving down that proposal. Phase one, the agreement is worth $119,000, and the cost will be recoverable if the grant is approved. What if the grant is not approved?
The grant is not approved, or grant slash loan, because this, this isn't necessarily a, a complete grant. Basically, what the, what the city will have is we'll have completed environmental work on these four projects that are, that are critical projects in our capital improvement, so we will still have that as a deliverable. We, we will have a completed PER, so preliminary engineering, we'll have the alternatives fully vetted, we'll have good cost estimates, and we'll, we'll have that. So, if we, if we aren't successful in this, we can apply for USDA loan funding again, or another, another funding source to try to fund this project. But it wouldn't be recoverable from USDA.
One more tough question, being he's, being he's in the room. Is there some reason we do not favor working with our local engineer still?
All, all firms were, were viewed as, as capable. So, with this, it, the answer to, to the question is no, you know, in fact, there was even.
That's fine.
Yeah, there was even an item on this previous agenda, which, you know, we're, we're gonna be working hand in hand with, with Mr. Stover. But, yeah.
I assume that, I just need to, need to ask. Thank you.
You know, since we're, we're having these particular comments, and my, my concerns, after talking with Mr. Stover, and after thinking about it, is that we, we don't have kind of local skin in the game. We, we, we aren't circulating the dollars locally. And I've never been in favor of opting for a local person if that local person isn't fully qualified. But in this particular case, all three, and that, that's the good news, is we had three qualified firms bid. And, and that, that's good news for, for the city, and, and I, and I think regardless of how we move, this project will get done. But I, I've always wanted to try and defer to at least some of the project being done locally, just because it improves our economy, and it also has someone on the ground available at any point during a project. So, I, I will make those comments, and, and that's, that's my concern if we go to a Sacramento firm.
I also spoke with Mr. Stover on a couple of occasions, and I also met with Mr. Weir. And as most people know, I always have lots and lots of questions about a lot of things. So, I will, I'll address some of the things that, that concern me about this. Some of these have been echoed already by the rest of the council. I agree with Mr. Holly that, that if we have the equal, two equal firms that can do the work, my preference would be to, to stay local if we can. I am concerned about a couple of other things, just doing some of the research. Some of the, when you look at a very small firm, I think Coleman is like 11 people in their office or something? And we're talking about not a single, if we were only talking about contracting with somebody just to do the PER, and that's all we were going, and we just kind of wanted to see how a person worked out. But I would think that it would really be to our advantage to be doing just what you articulated a while ago, and that is establish a relationship with an engineering firm that's gonna walk with us through this entire process, which is not going to be a year, not two years, but probably a three-year process to do that. And having somebody that we have a local contact with, when you're talking about a long-term project like that, I think that that just makes a lot of sense to me. Also, in looking at their scope of services, and you, you alluded to the fact that Coleman, that their two lead individuals are pilots. As part of their scope of services, they indicated that, that travel would be at cost. I don't know what it costs for them to fly their plane up here. That, I mean, honestly, that concerns me. I, I have no idea what it costs to, to fly a private plane, but if, if we're committing to at. but if, if we're committing to at-cost, I could estimate what it costs to, to, to get on a plane and fly to Portland from Sacramento, and then fly from Portland to, to Crescent City. I can estimate some of those things. But somebody's cost on their private plane, honestly, just that thought is a red flag for me that says, oh, well, that could be any number. And so there, there are just things like that, and then looking through their scope of services, it seemed like there were things that, that they were going to do. I know the city has on file some of the things regarding the evaluations of those tanks. We talked about that when you gave me this, the whirlwind two-day tour of our water system that, that, that we've, that several years ago, those tanks were evaluated. We pretty well know what needs to be done with those things. To spend a bunch of time redoing some of those things, they don't know, but, but we know. Another concern I have is, in the RFP, I believe there was a, a scoring matrix, a hundred-point scoring matrix. It's interesting to me that, that if the, if the committee had a hundred-point scoring matrix, that we don't know what, where everybody scored. And I don't know if that ends up being difficult because so much of this ends up being subjective with a diverse panel. How do you get that scoring? But there's a big difference between a hundred-point scoring matrix and a one, two, three ranking, from my vantage point. So those are just, and I probably have several more things that, that I could share or bring up, but, you know, I, I guess if you want to respond to any of those, I'm not asking you to, but those are, those are concerns that, that I have, just looking and listening and talking to both Mr. Stover as well as to you about some of my concerns.
No, and if I, if I can respond just, just briefly on it, those are all valid points. In regard to, you know, the cost of, of the flight, of travel, it is included in, in the dollar amount that's before you. You know, they have five trips that, that are scheduled, so, so that, that part is included. You know, if you went with somebody like Kennedy Jinks, obviously, you have a local firm that's here that can do a lot of legwork. There's still gonna be some travel with, with any of the firms, really. So it's to a certain degree. But, but to answer the question in regard to Coleman specifically, their flight and all that cost is included in that dollar amount that's before you. The, and, and I hear what you're saying, and I've struggled this over, over time as well, as far as rating consultants, and if you, we did have a hundred-point matrix, and everybody did grade on that same hundred-point matrix. But somebody's, and I don't have the exact scores in front of me tonight as far as the, the number in that hundred-point matrix, but somebody's top firm could only get seventy-five, and another person's top firm, they might get a hundred, just based on how they just grade. And so they're still, if you add those up, you can really weight how somebody grades at a particular firm. All of a sudden, that person's individual grading of that firm has more influence than another person's does. And so that's why you go to more of a, you, you take their rankings into consideration, you look at all their, their, their points, and then you just turn it into one, two, three, four. And that way, everybody's kind of weighted the same from a ranking standpoint. But, so, so they were, they were ranked, but, and that's the reason we went with that.
So I guess in a follow-up to that, then, was there a, was there really that big of skewed, that, that, that somebody's top was in the seventies and somebody else's top was in the nineties?
You know, in this particular case, and again, I don't have those numbers in front of me, I can't, I can't speak to it. But before they were ever even evaluated, that was the process in which, in which we went. So we used their scoring. And so basically, that hundred-point matrix was to help people evaluate, one, did they have all the right information in the RFP compared to, and the, the point value for that, compared to how much experience do they have with, say, USDA, or how much experience do they have with engineering? And so that portion ends up being weighted more on that hundred point. So that's the purpose of having a hundred points.
I, I guess, and again, you've said you don't have them, but I mean, if, if there really is, is, was that big of discrepancy on that hundred-point matrix, then, and, and no offense to anybody on the panel, but that just doesn't seem, that seems odd to me, that, that there would be that, that two people who are evaluating primarily objective information, that there would be, I mean, I can understand somebody got a ninety-five and somebody got a ninety-two, or somebody got a ninety-five, somebody got an eighty-nine, but if, if there's a huge gap in this scoring matrix, then on, on primarily objective capabilities, and did you, are all the things in the, in the packet, are they capable? I'm just concerned about the, of the way the process was, and I'm not trying to find fault. I'm just trying to understand why there is, why, why there is such a, would be such a discrepancy.
You know, again, I don't have the numbers in front of me, and I'm not saying there was on this particular case. But in, in general, a lot of the evaluations for, especially consultant, you know, consultant selection is, is more difficult than, say, bid selection, because it's not just a hard number. You know, it really, there's a lot of intangibles that come into it. It's how well you can work with the team. It's, it's, you know, how well they present their team, in their written proposal, their, their experience. And so that's where you go to, to more of this style of, of ranking, where you might have an overall hundred-point system, but then you, you turn it back into just your top one, two, three, and four teams.
Well, I, I guess, from the subjective standpoint, then, you've, you've told us already, objectively, you feel confident that all, all three of the top three firms objectively are capable of, of doing the work.
I do.
So then the subjective element that, that the committee, that the panel weighed in with, I respect that and appreciate that. But given the fact that, that the five of us, subjectively, now to make, to make a decision, and it will be the five of us who will then be determining whether or not we're going to enter into a loan down the road, hopefully with USDA, for millions of dollars, then our subjective weighing in, I think, is very important on our part. And we need to, we need to have this discussion, and we need to take ownership over looking at what, what we value. And again, I don't mean that to be disrespectful to the panel at all, but ultimately, the, the council is going to have to vote on spending, borrowing millions of dollars. We already heard tonight, the public speak to the issues of us borrowing money. And so I think we just have to look at this as, as, as hard as we can, and as difficult as it may be. And I know I'm putting you on the spot, because you've got to be the guy that's gotta stand there. But I, I do feel very strongly about, about this from a long-term standpoint in our community, that having a local presence is very important in, in this. So that's, I mean, that's just where I am on this.
I don't disagree and respect the comments and, you know, your evaluation of this process.
I'm done, Mayor.
Hi, Eric. Just one more quick question. Kennedy Jinks, I, the name is very familiar to us. Can you tell us what it is that they've done for us in the past?
So Kennedy Jinks has worked on, on several projects. They've been, or played a key role in the wastewater treatment plant in the past. So, uh, brief history on it, they're, they're, one of their lead people out of their Eugene office, his name is Ron Walls. He was the project engineer for the treatment plant reconstruction project. He was then with Brown and Caldwell. He then moved to Kennedy Jinks, and because we wanted that consistent presence on that particular project, so that's where, where we kept him on retainer, so that's where Kennedy Jinks got involved. They helped us with our thirty-year capital improvement plan for the, for the treatment plant. Because of his vast knowledge and his team's vast knowledge of the treatment plant, he's also assisted us in the, the headwork screen project that we did recently. Those are just some of the, the recent projects.
We've heard the name a lot, and that's, that's a firm that could be worked with, it sounds like.
That's a firm we've worked with a lot, and have good success working with them.
Thank you.
For the record, I did not talk to Mr. Stover. He did reach out to me, but I did not have the time to talk to him. So after hearing the council on the discussion, I'm, I'm hearing that we possibly might want to change our contract. But I'm sure we have to get public comment on this first, and then we're gonna have to see what kind of procedure, if we either vote it down and put it back out.
So one, one other item is, if that is the direction of the council, this dollar amount which was negotiated with Coleman Engineering will change.
Exactly.
So I would have to sit down with Kennedy Jinks, take a thorough look at their scope, take a look at, at where they're at cost-wise, and negotiate that.
Yeah, it could cost us a couple hundred thousand more.
It probably won't be in that order magnitude, but, but it could be, could be maybe ten, twenty, thirty thousand dollars more.
Chump change. It's the city's, buddy. I'm sorry. That was a poor joke. Okay, so I'm gonna open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this particular item of authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement with Coleman Engineering for a USDA real development application? Is there any public comment? Come on up!
Million of the dollars, nobody, go ahead, go take it. I have three million right here in my pocket. Want it? I'm Connie Morrison from the county. Gosh, you're concerned about the flight coming in and the pay and cost? Me too. But nobody seemed to be concerned when patients have to pay for their own flight to wherever because of this hospital, but that's beside the point. Where's the money coming from to pay for this? You said it was a grant, I guess, and I believe I read in the contract that any money that comes in from other resources goes to pay down the revolving loan. That's not true? Okay. And I was wondering how many people are in each county, or in each company that has bid for this? And are there any local workers gonna be working on this project? And one of my concerns about Mr. Stover was his relationship with James Barnes. He was the agent for the, the houses over behind Walmart. And then all of the, um, um, change orders that were not in writing, that amounted to hundreds of thousands of dollars. And I wish somebody would look into that before they vote on this. And is there gonna be a public meeting about exactly what is gonna be done? And you're right, we cannot afford another million dollars for this. They lied about the population. They said it was seven thousand six hundred dollars, ratepayers, in Crescent City. It was minus three thousand, they included the, the prisoners.
Okay, you wanna stay unsubject, Connie, about this particular item?
About choosing which company? I think you have some work to do before you ever even get to that, don't you? About the contract. I know it's in the paper. You wanna forget what happened last ten years. But you've destroyed the two thousand eight documents, and the contract is for thirty-six years. And you have a contract to follow. I'll send it like that.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, see no other public comment, I'll close it and bring it back up to the council. Excuse me, any more discussion?
Well, I guess clarification then, a process. If we, if we take no action on this, then can we instruct staff to go back to?
Mr. Weir.
To, uh, look at one of the other contractors, if that's our desire? I mean, because we're authorizing the city manager. If we don't authorize, if you do nothing, then he's not authorized, right? Is that, looking at our turn?
So you have, um, two options, or more, but at least two. If you are not, if, if the council does, if nobody wishes to make a motion on the contract that's before you, then the contract won't move forward. Alternatively, you can direct staff to negotiate a contract with one of the other firms, and that would have to be brought back to the next meeting for approval.
Thank you.
So that would be all right to, to make that motion, even though it's not in the, um?
It's not a motion, it would be direction.
A direction, okay.
Okay, I've been hearing that you guys want them to get another contractor. Is that a consensus?
Yes.
I don't think you wanna do this by consensus, though, do you?
So it's direction?
Is consensus enough for direction to do that, to, to negotiate with another contractor? Would it be better off having a motion to direct staff for that?
Motion to reject this contract and then direct, make direction, is that what?
We don't need to reject the contract. I would just, a, a motion directing staff to negotiate a contract with X company and bring it back to the next meeting. Because it will still have to be approved in a public meeting with all of the details spelled out.
So you have to name a specific company?
That mine, Mayor, unless anybody else has, wants to weigh in. I'd like to make a motion to, uh, direct our city manager, our public works director, to negotiate a new contract with Stover Kennedy Jinks for the USDA, um, application.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to renegotiate the contract with Stover Engineering and Kennedy Jinks for this USDA project. Can you please?
And, and, um, I, I would just like to make a couple of comments that we appreciate the panel's work on this. You know, it was not an easy task. I too believe very strongly in supporting, um, local businesses. I think that that is something that is very critical to our community. And, um, what, um, our public works director has indicated is that all the firms were equally capable. So with that, I would, um, I, I believe that, I think we're taking the right direction and, and going with a local firm.
Okay, please pull the vote. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-Ten End Score?
Yes.
Mayor Gastonow?
Yes, thank you very much. That passes unanimously to renegotiate with Stover Kennedy Jinks on this project. Okay, we are now on to item number eleven. Consider and authorize interim city manager to sign an engagement letter for bond council services in amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand to be paid, contingent upon receipt by the city of the first draw funds from United States Department of Agriculture Real Development Program. On account of the purchase price of certificates of participation, take action as necessary and appropriate. Is this a moot point because of the contract that we just had to renegotiate and bring back to the next meeting?
Um, well, it's not moot. It's for the same project. Let Emily address the, this issue.
Great. Thank you. Hello, Ms. Boyd.
Hello, Mr. Gastonow, Mayor, members of the council. Um, here's the thing with the USDA project, and the reason that I would recommend that you move forward with this item. The, what, where we are in the stage of the project with USDA, which is grant and loan component, is that we need to complete a, a final application. As you'll recall, we went through the pre-application process last fall. USDA approved that and asked us to please move forward and submit a complete application. The PER that Mr. Weir is trying to get done is a part of that final application. Another requirement for USDA as part of that final application is that we have a bond council on board. With the bond council, you're not required to pay them unless you actually issue CLP certificates of participation, and they are only paid from the proceeds of the loan. And so if the loan does not go through, you don't pay them. If the, if the project stalls and doesn't even get off the ground, if we don't get beyond this contract point, we don't pay them. But what we have done is we have done a search for bond council, and we have made a selection of what we believe to be the best qualified to handle this particular project for you. And since you are in administrative flux right now between the city manager and finance director, my recommendation to you would be that you go ahead and authorize the city, the interim city manager to approve the engagement letter with bond council, so that you have that on file. When you resolve the other part of the project of how you're gonna get your PER done, then you don't have to come back and revisit this particular issue. But of course, that's your decision and your choice. You could say, we don't wanna do anything with this until we resolve this other problem. It's really up to you. With the bond council, we'll get the engagement letter signed, we'll send that to them, but we will request for them not to begin work until they've been instructed to begin work, and, and that's what they will do. So having said that, would you like me to proceed with presenting the item?
Please.
Does that seem right to you, Martha?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, so what we did is we received a list of bond council that have worked with USDA on this, these specific types of projects. USDA gave us a list of thirteen bond council. We sent the intent, or, a month or two ago, you remember, I came to you and said, I wanna send out this letter asking bond council to please provide us with a letter of intent to propose on the project. So we sent that out to those thirteen firms. Eight of them responded. We took a look, um, myself- We took a look, um, myself, Martha Rice, the city attorney, and Linda Adams, our financial consultant on this project, who also has done a number of USDA projects, so she's quite familiar with how these processes work. We reviewed those, and, see if I can find the right page of my notes, and I'll tell you what we, uh, what we reviewed them on. We were looking at, wanted to make sure they had a demonstrated understanding of what the city needs, that they had an understanding of what the project was, that they had recent experience in issuing a certificate of participation in a water infrastructure project. Now, a certificate of participation in this issue, in this case, is called an installment sale agreement. What it means is that you will set up a public financing authority that will issue the bonds, the CLPs. They will be borrowing the money. The water fund will be buy, and so then that public financing authority will be, uh, funding or paying for the infrastructure. The water fund will be buying that infrastructure from the public financing authority. Uh, so when we reviewed the applications, we came to the conclusion that Myers-Navey, Stephanie Downs, the assistant, the senior associate at Myers-Navey, had the best experience with this particular type of project. Um, we appreciated their fee proposal. It was in the moderate range. Um, they're including all of their expenses in their fees, uh, and the expenses as well as the fees are contingent upon a successful COP closing, and they would be paid from the closing. Which means that that would be added on to the amount that you borrow, but it, it also means that you're not gonna have to put up any money right now for this. And if you get down the road and it turns out that the project stalls out and the project, um, is terminated, or for some reason the COP doesn't go through, you're not going to have to pay, uh, Myers-Navey anything because the fees and the costs are contingent upon a successful close. So I would recommend that you, um, authorize the interim city manager to sign the engagement letter.
Any questions for Ms. Boyd? Thank you very much.
No, just a comment that I, I think that, that the firm that you're going, you're recommending us, uh, to with Myers and Navey is, um, an excellent choice.
Yes.
Um, I've, uh, talked with them personally at the League of Cities Annual Conferences. I get their emails on a regular basis with all kinds of helpful information. They're, um, very informative and, um, very helpful, and I think it's a really good recommendation, so thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Boyd. I'm gonna open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this issue? Mr. Stover?
For Stover, Stover Engineering, there seemed to be a little confusion when this topic was started. Ms. Boyd is correct. You do need bond council, and that's a service that our team will not be providing for this project.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment on this? All right, seeing no public comment, I'm gonna close public comment and bring it back to the council. Is there any other discussion or a motion?
I will make a motion to authorize our interim cit, interim city manager to sign an engagement letter for bond council services in an amount not to exceed $35,000 to be paid contingent upon receipt by the city of the first draw of funds from the USDARD on account of the purchase price of the certificates of participation.
Second, uh, before I second, just a quick question. Do we, should we mention Myers-Navey in the, in the motion? I, what did that?
Okay, I will amend that to include Myers-Navey as the contractor.
Okay, I second that motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-Ten Min Score?
Yes.
Mayor Gasnow?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Okay, we are on to item number 12, Fire Hall Seismic Retrofit Project. Consider for approval the final plans and specification for the Crescent City Fire Hall Retrofit Project and consider for authorization the interim city manager to enter into an agreement with Adams Commercial General Contracting to complete the base bid of the Crescent City Fire Hall Retrofit Project, excuse me, in the amount of $741,259. Take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Knight?
Thank you, Mayor Gasnow and councilmembers. This is gonna be a very good project for the city of Crescent City, and Eric, where our public work structure is gonna present the item.
Thank you very much. Mr. Weir? Good to see ya.
Yes, good seeing you guys as well. All right, on to our next project. So, one, doesn't look like this is going to format very easily. Is there a way you can put that in full screen? Uh, but what's before you tonight is to authorize a contract, well, wanna approve the final plans and specifications, and then also authorize a contract with Adams, uh, General Contracting, uh, to complete the base bid for the Fire Hall Seismic Retrofit Project. Uh, you can see what's, uh, what's before you is a cost analysis on their particular, uh, on their particular bid, and then some of the other components that are involved in the project itself. First, we can take a look at the... It's really hard to see. Maybe, here we go. Okay, so this is the, uh, this is the bid results spreadsheet. You can see that we had four responsive bidders, uh, for the, for the Fire Hall project. Uh, the, all bidders were below the engineer's estimate, which is always a good thing, and I would like to commend...
Has that ever happened before?
Uh, I'm sure it is, uh, I'm sure it has happened somewhere in the United States, but it's been a, it's been a while for us. Uh, so anyway, so this is a, this is a nice surprise, and there was some contingency built in. Uh, it also shows a competitive, uh, nature in this particular project in which we had four contractors, uh, really going hard after this project, so all their numbers did come in under the engineer's estimate. Would like to thank Stover Engineering. They were the, uh, the design engineers for this particular project, uh, as well as Matts and Belarga Architects. So this project, uh, was comprised of really two components. You have the base bid, which is the seismic retrofit portion, in which we received Cal OES grant funding, uh, to fund that particular portion of the project. And then you have all of the bid alternates, alternates, uh, one through five that you see listed down below. The alternates one through five are for the building, building modernization portion of the project. That includes an upgrade of the electrical, a kitchen remodel, addition of a washer extractor, as well as interior finishes. This project is quite complex because the grant funding only covers the seismic portion. And so then the city needing to upgrade this 1953 building needed to come up with some way to fund the modernization portion. So the, uh, the good news that I bring not only is that we have a competitive bid that is below the initial base bid estimate and within our, our funding allotment of that particular project, but it's also to announce that at least we have, have the preliminary award of the ICBG funds. ICBG funds is a partnership that the, uh, city went into with the Elk Valley Rancheria, uh, in which the portions of this project for the building modernization alternates one through five were included, but also a new fire engine. So the city was, uh, was notified that we had received this $600,000 ICBG grant, which comes with a 200,000, and these are numbers are approximately, approximately $200,000 match that the, uh, city council's previously authorized. So I'd like to, one, commend the, the council for, uh, for authorizing that application and that, uh, that maximum match amount, and then also the Elk Valley Rancheria and their efforts to submit this application and, uh, and get awarded this project.
So we found that out already?
So the, yes.
When the, uh, agenda came out, it didn't, we didn't know.
Uh, no, it was, uh, Friday afternoon, and apparently they received the award letter. They have not received the actual terms and conditions, so we're gonna have a project meeting hopefully later this week, and, uh, and that out, the, the project, it's in its entirety and all the different components. So it's great news, uh, for, for this...
That's terrific news.
Yeah. And again, hats off to, uh, to the Elk Valley Rancheria for, uh, for this partnership is really will bring a benefit not only for the building, but also, you know, a new fire engine that's, uh, in the order magnitude of around 400,000.
Who gets to pick that out?
I think, uh, Chief Wakefield has earned the honors on that one. Uh, so this, those are the bid results, and so as you can see, uh, Adams General Contracting is, is the apparent low bidder, and they have, uh, they have met the initial, uh, initial contract requirements on that. Going back to the, going back to the, uh, the project summary, so this is the base bid. So you can see the, the revenues are in the top portion there with our grant of 686,000 approximately. The required 25% city match, approximately 228. And then the council, due to the, uh, initial engineer's estimate, went ahead and allocated 254,000 approximately to this project, bringing the total funding to about 1,170,000 approximately. We have design costs of about 128,000. The, uh, the base bid for Adams is the 741 that you see here. We'll need to do the ADA public improvements, which will be new sidewalks, driveways in and around the facility. That is not included in this project. That'll be an additional project that the city will, uh, the city will let to complete those before the, before the project is complete. Uh, we have an estimated project contingency of $100,000. We do think we're gonna need some contingency in this project as it's an old building. It's been under our harsh coastal climate with a lot of deluge storms that have blown through, so we are expecting some, uh, some dry rot that we couldn't identify during the design phase. Uh, and then with some construction management support to, uh, to complete this project. So that brings total funding to approximately about 1,100,000, leaving about 70,000 of currently unrestricted. That's not saying we won't need that 70,000, depending on what we find, but it currently is unrestricted. So as we were making this financial report to the council, trying to give you an idea of not only, one, how we were gonna fund this base bid portion of the project, but also the alternatives. And as, uh, Councilman, Councilmember Murray said, the grant status was unknown at this time. So if you, if you scroll down, this was the, uh, this was the cost analysis if we received the grant, and then further down, it's if we didn't receive the grant. Well, we now know that we don't have to discuss this portion, so we'll go back up to the, uh, the grant portion. So what will, uh, so what's before you tonight, one, approve the plans, uh, approve the, uh, the city interim city manager to sign the base bid, uh, portion of the, of the construction agreement with Adams. And then what we'll be coming back to the council is, uh, with possibly, uh, an MOA, memorandum of agreement with the Elk Valley Rancheria, uh, as well as a timetable, uh, in an upcoming meeting as to how we're gonna implement that grant. This is, uh, great news for the project. It also, as, as it, now we have a funding source, but it also adds some, some additional components to the project in which we'll probably have to put these alternates back out to bits, or still those are some of the nuances we're working with Elk Valley Rancheria on, is what exactly we have to do to comply with the ICBG requirements that are now going to fund this.
So, uh, Eric, does, then, when we look at the city match of 201,866, so, does that mean that when we were looking at the original on the previous page of the 254,000, is it, are we talking about then the difference of that 54,000? Or are we, are we gonna, because we're getting, we authorized a, a, a match with the grant, but we also authorized money to do this work if we didn't get the grant. Is that correct?
Well, the, the 254 was to complete the base bid portion. That was the additional funding that was gonna be required to complete this base bid.
Which we don't need now.
Which you still do need to complete the base bid to at least a certain extent. You know, there's $100,000 of contingency that's included in this, as well as construction management costs, still leaving 70,000 left over. So, so the, what I'm showing here, if this project goes as anticipated, which would be per this, this expense line item, you would have 70,000 left over.
I guess, and maybe I'm just getting confused here, but, but I, I thought that we authorized the additional funding to complete it, but I thought we also authorized the city match for the grant.
Which, which is this 201.
So when I'm looking at this, this revenue here of what it's going to take, and then I look at Adams's bid, it doesn't look like we're going to need the 254,000 to be able to add up to what needs to be done.
So, yeah, so the, the Adams...
We need a portion of it, but...
No, you're, you're, you're talking in this scenario here, where you have 924,000, and this estimated expense is gonna be 763,000.
That's the base.
That's, no, that's, that's the total building improvement plus the fire truck, which is lower than expected. So the portion of savings that the council could see here is about 25% of that difference. So it'd be about 25%, because we, if we spend whatever dollar amounts we spend in grant funds, we have to match that with, with a 25% match. So if we end up spending 763, our match would be 25% of that. So, so that's, that's the total dollars that you would spend out of this 201.
Uh, yeah, I, I understand that part about the, the match for the grant. I guess what I'm, what, what's running through my head is, is that it sounded to me like with the ICBG grant, that we're gonna get the fire truck plus someplace around 200,000 towards the building, uh, modifications updating. Is, isn't that...
What's...
Generally what we were, were looking at?
Well, this, this slide is, is basically what you're, what you're looking at. So by receiving this grant, what we'll be able to do is purchase the fire truck, and then hopefully complete these, these improvements, and you won't expend the full amount of that grant. So we'll have a 25% savings of whatever that full grant was, depending on how the costs come back.
So the idea is then, is to spend the 254,000 that we authorized and not take as much out of the grant?
The, you have to complete, so there's really, there's two separate projects now. You have your Cal OES grant, in which we have to be able to complete this base bid portion. That's for the seismic retrofit. So that is this project here. Your 254 is going to help pay for that. So, so whatever's left over, so you have, and you have $100,000 here, that's in contingency. If we don't spend any of that, then that'll be added to the 70, and that could be potential savings that, that you see.
Okay.
And then you have a separate project now, which will be for the building, the, the building modernization piece and the purchase of a fire truck. Whatever we spend on this project, we have to contribute a 25% match on. So it'll, it'll be a combination in there. There's potential savings, like you say, of, of anywhere between 100 and, I'd say 150, something like that.
I think I misunderstood that, too, to rolling back up there, or to the Cal OES hazard investigation. I see your, obviously your required match. I was understanding the additional funding allocation there authorized in October was to do the upgrades on the fire.
No, the...
That was to make up the difference of what the engineering estimate was.
The engineering estimate on just the base bid.
Since the engineering estimate is, is lower, I'm not, I guess, and maybe I'm just dumb, but if, if the engineering estimate was one thing, and we, we added the 254,000 to come from this 1.5 million dollar number, now we're back to a 1 point, whatever, 1.1 million dollar number, I'm not sure why we still need that in the base bid, given where, where, where we are.
Well, the, yes, the, the 254 was authorized to get us to the point where we thought we could construct this, this project. The engineer's estimate also did include some, some contingency. So now that we have design costs, we have their, their base bid of the 740 added in the, the 50,000, which was also included in, in some of those previous cost estimates, with the contingency of 100,000, and the 80, that's what this base bid project is estimated at. There's still 70,000 left over of that. So by coming in underneath, we have contingency, we have some construction management costs that we can now add in.
Okay. I'm looking to save the money, sorry. I, I, you know, and I, I appreciate the contingencies, and I think that that's important, but I do think it's, it's important for, for the public to know that, that while we're trying to do this project, that we don't come in with a project that all of a sudden the bid comes in below what our estimates were, but somehow we still spent all the money. And, and I think that, that, that there is that perception that the public has sometimes with us in government that, well, yeah, we, we, we saved some money, but we found a way to spend it. And, and I just, I wanna voice the fact that we authorized this to, with, based on the idea that, that it was gonna cost more, and now that it's not gonna cost as much based on the, what the actual bids came in at, I, I want us to, I want us to, to be as good a stewards with that money as we can and return it back to do the other things that need to be done in, in the city, so that's just...
Sure.
Sorry for belaboring this. I, I got my head around it now, and I, and I appreciate your patience with me.
No, no, and, you know, point, point well taken on this. You know, obviously, this is general fund dollars. General fund dollars are not easy to come by.
That's right.
Uh, same token, I wanna make sure that we don't try to, to tell the council it's going to be a, a, a lower number than what it actually might be coming. So I feel pretty confident that we will be able to come in with this base bid of project within these funding terms.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions for Mr. Weir? Thanks.
Thanks. He'll have more. Public comment, any public comment on this issue? Happy to hear about the ICBG grant.
That's awesome.
That's awesome. All right, seeing no public comment, we're going to bring you back to the council. Any more discussion or motion on item number 12, the Fire Hall Seismic Retrofit Project?
I'm sure Chief Wakefield will be happy to get this project started. Finally, it seems like we've had this on our agenda about a bazillion times now, so I'm really excited about it.
True.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize our city manager to enter into an agreement with Adams Commercial General Contracting to complete the base bid of the Crescent City Fire Hall retrofit project in the amount of 741,259.
Okay, do we need to have two actions on this because it says consider for approval of the final plans?
And authorize the city manager?
I would amend, do we need two actions?
You don't need two motions, but that needs to be also done tonight.
I will amend my motion to consider for approval of final plans and specification for the Crescent City Fire Hall retrofit project, and consider for authorization the city manager to enter into an agreement with Adams Commercial General Contracting to complete the base bid of the Crescent City Fire Hall retrofit project in the amount of 741,259.
I think we will all second that motion, but I will.
There we go. We have a motion in a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-Temen score?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Good work, everybody. Okay, we are on to new business item number 13, Consider for Adoption Resolution Number 2016-05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City approving the Look Back Measurement Method and Affordability Safe Harbors under the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act, ACA. Take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Knight?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Gastineau. Councilmembers, our human resources manager, Kathy Hafterson, has stuck around to tell us all about the Affordable Care Act and how we stay in compliance.
If I would have known that, I would have moved her on.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. My brief presentation here is mostly just from an administrative point of view, just to make sure that staff is in compliance with the ACA. So a little bit of background on the Affordable Care Act, as you may already know, was implemented in 2010. It basically gave a timeframe for implementation. Most of the burden at this point was put on insurance companies to make sure that their health plans were in compliance as far as affordability and some other things that the ACA had deemed appropriate. And most of these have only resulted in administrative changes for the city so far. Part of that, as we move forward with the ACA, they have recently implemented what is called an employer's shared responsibility, which is also known as the play or pay mandate. So to be in compliance with that, staff has reviewed the components of that and has determined, of course, the city is an applicable large employer, and so we need to abide by the components of the compliance for the ACA. Part of that was that we need to have a backup plan for those individuals that have, generally are part-time and are not full-time people, but may work enough hours to qualify as a full-time person under the ACA. So we have defined that in the staff report that you have. We've also determined that the city does have the plans that qualify for the minimum value, as determined again by the ACA. We've reviewed our current contributions to the health insurance, and that also is within compliance for the ACA. So at this point, what we needed to do is establish parameters for additional compliance, which is determining a standard measurement period, as well as the safe harbor provision. The Look Back Measurement period is either cities or employers have to determine that look back period for either between three months or 12 months. And the city's best review, our staff has determined that we would like to recommend a 12-month look-back period. That 12-month look-back period will allow us to capture those individuals that work seasonal as well, to make sure that they, if they do fall under the full-time qualifications under the ACA, then we would be able to offer them health coverage. If we do anything shorter than that, we could inadvertently be leaving out those individuals, and we felt that was not the appropriate action. So part of the staff report here, as well as in the resolution, is to designate a 12-month look-back period. We are also wanted to make a recommendation for one of the safe harbors that is determined under the ACA. As far as determine affordability, is that we would like to use the rate-of-pay safe harbor. The ACA does allow employers to choose three different options to select their rate of pay, or, excuse me, to do the safe harbor provision, and we felt the rate of pay was the best one for our, most of our staff being hourly employees. So I have before you in the staff report was additional information. And so at this point, I just would like to conclude my presentation and ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Hafterson?
First of all, I wanted to tell you, thank you for taking the extra time to do the 12-month study, and I really appreciate you doing that extra work and taking that extra time. It means a lot to our team that you are doing that for them, and I really appreciate it. I know it's a lot more work for you, but it means a lot to the people that are employed for us, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I just have one question. On page three of your report, at the bottom, it says that you're recommending establishing the part-time and temporary employee health, monthly health insurance contribution of 625, and then the minimum employer coverage amount for the lowest hourly part-time and temporary employees, and then the employee would be required to pay the remaining health insurance premium costs. Do we have any idea about what the, maybe an estimate of what that might be for them?
Yes, thank you for that, Ms. Murray. I did forget to include that our initial review of this process and for putting these systems in place, there would be no fiscal impact to the city, as far as any additional costs as far as the part-time or seasonal employees, because they generally work below that 30-hour threshold. This 625 amount that we have here is that in the event someone does fall into that full-time status as determined by the ACA, the city has to be able to offer them affordable insurance in order to stay in compliance. So the city has come up with 625 as of within the affordable parameters, that someone making little over minimum wage would then be able to buy up into our health plan. This is just, obviously, that the full-time people get more as far as an employer contribution, but this would be our base minimum. Did that answer your question?
The city's paying the 625?
No, we would offer that to the individuals, yes, for seasonal, part-time, should they become eligible under the ACA.
But the employee themselves would be paying?
They pay the difference.
Okay.
Between this, anything above.
So my question is, do we have any idea what the difference would be?
It would depend on their family situation-
Okay.
And depend on which of the health plans they selected.
How many dependents?
We do have three, and they range in price-
Okay, all right.
And tiers.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
I think you answered this question in a sense, but I was a little confused about the requirements that we offer coverage to substantially all the full-time employees and their dependent children. But in this particular one, we don't really offer it for dependent children. We do pretty much an employee-only plan, but if they want to pay up to the dependent children, then they could include those?
For the seasonal and part-time?
For the seasonal, yeah.
Yes, they certainly could buy up if that is what their choice is, yes.
Okay. So there's no requirement that dependent children be-
No, the requirement is only that the city make it available to them. We need to offer it. And so based on that, this was our base to start with, would be 625 to cover more than, like 80% of the cost of the health plan, should they choose the lowest option that CalPERS offers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this resolution about the Affordable Care Act? Seeing no public comment, close public comment, bring it back to the council. Is there any more discussion and/or motions?
A move, we approve Resolution Number 2016-05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Crescent City approving the Look Back Measurement Method and Affordability Safe Harbors under the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act.
I'll second. We have a motion in a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly?
Do we need to, I'm sorry, question? Do we need to delegate authority to the city manager, his designated, to implement the details? Is that something that-
It's part of the motion.
Needs to be included in the motion?
I would highly recommend that, and just go to the city manager to authorize any necessary documents.
Is it in the resolution?
It's in the recommendation.
Yeah, it's under the recommendation.
Would you like, good call. Would you like to amend your motion? Mr. Short, to start?
Let me amend that to say, and delegate authority to the city manager and his or her designated to implement the details of the safe harbors through an ACA compliance and implementation plan. That work?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. In a second, you agree with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, good. Okay, let's go ahead and pull that vote.
Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-Temen score?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. Okay, hey, look, item number 14, this shouldn't take but a moment. Review and adopt Resolution Number 2016-06, admitting the fiscal year 2015, 16 operating capital improvement budgets for the City of Crescent City and direct staff to work with Delnor County on subvention funds agreement. Take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Knight?
Thank you again, Mayor Gastineau and councilmembers. And at the same time, I want to thank Emily Boyd, our finance director, for preparing this detailed report, which she'll be providing to you, and also thank her in advance for evidently doing a very good job of making her revenue projections for the general fund, which certainly her approach really helps with this conversation tonight.
All right, thank you. Ms. Boyd, how are you tonight?
I'm very good.
All right, thank you.
That's it.
But take your time, take your time. There we go.
I'm just thinking I should have had more caffeine or something to keep me going here. So we will try, what I'm going to try to do is just walk you through the amendments or the adjustments or changes that we're requesting. All right, so let's start with the general fund. Revenues. Now, we have looked at TOT quite closely. What we've done, as you know, in recent, in the last year, year and a half or so, we've begun a TOT audit program, where we're looking at the hotels. We have 31 hotels in the city that are paying TOT, and I believe we've audited about 12 or 15 of those. We have some in process. So we've audited close to, you know, a third, almost half of them. So we have a good feel for what those revenues are going to be, so we could develop some kind of, you know, future projections. And our original budget estimate on TOT for this year was low compared to what we see at mid-year, especially after we get that first quarter, the July, August, September quarter comes in that, as you know, those summer months are when we really get our highest revenues there. So we feel confident in increasing our TOT revenue estimate by $66,000. We have two other areas of revenue that we're expecting to get. One is the RSTP funding for striping. That's the regional service transportation, and you will see a corresponding expenditure of $30,000 there. And then the next item there of an increase in revenue is the Emergency Management Performance Grant, $15,000, and you'll see a corresponding expenditure of $15,000 there. Both of those funding items, we did not have in our original budget. I don't think we yet gotten approval on them at that point in time. Then we have some additional charges for services. Revenues are going up. The fire personnel costs, those relate to a couple of different things. One was billbacks for mutual aid on the Gasky Fire, and then mutual aid on another fire. Did Steve leave? Yeah, I've forgotten which one that was. So we've already received these additional revenues. Another charge for service, sort of, it's in that category, is the SB 90 mandated cost reimbursement. And you may be familiar with that. Those are the state reimbursements for mandated costs, and the state sometimes pays them, sometimes doesn't, you know. What a lot of cities have taken to doing, and we've done that as well, is we just don't even budget for it because we don't know if we're going to get it. In this particular case, that $4,360 we've actually already received this year. Inter-fund reimbursements, that $4,760. That relates to an expenditure you're going to see, which is $7,000 for special election, which we're going to need in June. On the, the city, and that's in the city clerk budget. And the city clerk budget is originally charged in the general fund, and then portions of it are allocated back to the other funds, because the city clerk doesn't work just for the general fund. As you've seen tonight, she's done a lot of work recently for the sewer fund, for example. So that gets allocated back. This $4,760 is 68% of the 7,000, and that 68% will be coming back from the other funds. And then additional revenue here is the bid farmer's market. We did receive $1,763 from bid for farmer's market, and we had not entered any budget number there, because we just really didn't know what was going to happen. So a total increase in revenue of $146,450. Expenditures, which coincidentally you'll find add up to $146,450. On the fireside, that $24,000 number is going to be familiar to you now. That's the amount that we got reimbursed, but that's also the amount we paid to the volunteers and stipends and payroll-related costs. The fire department has asked us to increase the line item for pre-employment cost. That's for the screening, physicals, and that sort of thing for volunteer firefighters. They found this year that they're just needing more money in that area. I think their volunteer numbers have picked up. Training costs, we're going to reduce the fire department expenditure budget there, $16,500. That's a result of what was probably just a budgeting misunderstanding at the beginning of this year. Those training costs are for the trainer that is working at the district, and he's being paid by the district. And so we had included the entire amount of training cost in this, in our budget, because as you remember, we're splitting some of that with the district. But the district has said to me, don't include that there, we're just paying at DURAT. So we're removing that from our budget. Police overtime, an increase of 20,000. For the last three fiscal years, not this year, but the three years prior to this year, police overtime has run roughly $70,000. We budgeted this year only 50,000 for police overtime, and it's just not going to make it. We need to increase that budget amount, based on what we usually incur, and also based on the fact it's really difficult to control police overtime costs. You know, if they get called to court, or somebody has to get paid overtime to cover, if you have somebody sick, somebody gets paid overtime to cover. When we have such a small police force and we're operating 24/7, we're just going to incur overtime. And then on the legal, $11,500, those are legal fees. As you know, our four employee groups are currently in negotiations, and so these are legal fees related to the employee group negotiations. Bid materials and supplies, earlier this fiscal year, the council dissolved, discontinued, terminated bid, suspended, thank you, there's the word I was looking for, suspended bid. And we had actually budgeted an amount for bid expenses, and so this negative, this reduction in expenses is the amount that we're not now going to use because bid is suspended. Property tax passed through to Delnor County. This one bears a- This one bears a little more explanation. This relates to, I'm sure you've all heard the term, the subvention funds agreement with the county. Just briefly, in case there's anybody watching this that's not totally familiar with this issue, I'll just briefly talk about it. Back in ninety-one, I think, was the agreement was signed, the agreement, there was an agreement, a revenue-sharing agreement between the city and the county that related to revenues that the city was going to get increases in certain revenue sources based upon the annexation of the prison with the city. And some of those, they're called subvention funds. Those are revenues that are collected by another government agency and passed along to you. There were four, I believe, revenue sources included in the agreement, three, four, cigarette tax, gas tax, vehicle license fees, thank you, I told you I was getting sleepy, I needed more caffeine. Was there a fourth one, Martha? I don't recall what it might have been.
I thought there was a fourth, but I can't remember.
So did I, but cigarette tax, no, it hasn't existed for a very long time, and the fourth one obviously isn't part of this discussion either. Vehicle license fees were eliminated as a revenue source to municipal governments. Were eliminated in 2004 when the state re, they did a little swap on how they were paying revenues on to municipalities, and they called it a VLF swap. And so, since 2004, and what they did at that time in order to backfill the municipalities is they started contributing a, they gave municipalities a larger amount of property tax to make up for it. Since 2004, property taxes in lieu of VLF have been increased, evaluated every year and increased based upon property tax assessed values. Vehicle license fees in 2004 and before were based upon population. So, what you have is a revenue source that has changed. It's no longer vehicle license fees, and it's also, the way the revenue is generated has changed because it's now based on property tax rather than vehicle license fee payments. The agreement, the 1991 agreement with the county talks about vehicle license fees only. It doesn't talk about in the event the state changes this funding source, you know, it changes. From 2004 through 2014, the city continued to contribute a portion of the property tax in lieu of VLF to pass that along through to the county. In 2015, we stopped doing that, and here's why we stopped doing it. We had a gas tax, you recall, I said gas tax was one of those subvention funds. We had an audit from the State Controller's Office. They came in and audited our gas tax, and they saw that we were passing through a portion of our gas tax revenue to Delnar County, and the field auditor who came out and did that said, "You can't do that. That's an ineligible expense." So, we said, "Okay, if we can't do it, the State Controller's Office has told us we can't, we better stop doing it." So, we stopped passing through gas taxes, and we'll talk about how that impacts us here a little bit later in this presentation. But at that time, that was July of 2014, we began searching for the 1991 agreement. We weren't able to find it in the city offices or the city files, and I reached out to the county and asked them to help us find it, and it took a little bit over a year before we found the actual agreement was located. And when we're at, because we were told we couldn't do gas taxes and because we couldn't find an agreement, we suspended this property tax in lieu of VLF payment also. Did not make that payment either. My charge as your financial officer is that I can't make payments unless I have an agreement that tells me I can pay it. And typically, those agreements are approved by you as the city council. So, we have not made those payments for two fiscal years now. It has been the topic of two, two-by-two meetings with the county, one last fall and one on January twenty-nine. And the consensus from those meetings, as I understand it, is that both parties, county and city, believe that it was the intent of the agreement to continue sharing these revenues. And if that's the intent of the agreement, and if the property taxes we are now getting, we wouldn't be getting at all if we hadn't originally been getting the VLF, then we should continue to make the payment to the county. Staff is requesting tonight that you direct us to work with the county and develop an agreement that actually does say, pay this specific property tax in lieu in this manner, pass this along to the county. I would like to request that you direct staff to do that and that we don't actually write that check until such time as we get an agreement that tells us this is what you're paying and this is why you're paying it. And I believe the county was, in our two-by-two, they were agreeable to talking about this agreement, updating it, making it based on what the reality of the world is right now, which is different than it was in 1991. So, circle all the way back to this particular item. In fiscal year fifteen, we had budgeted $115,000 for this pass-through payment, and you may recall last fall when I gave you the report about your financial results from fiscal year fifteen, I told you where your revenues and your expenditures had varied from budget and how you ended up with a fairly large chunk of change left over, so to speak. One of those items was we had budgeted $115,000 for that expenditure, which was not made. So, that contributed to your fund balance. So, if you want to direct staff to update the agreement and then back pay the pass-through from fiscal fifteen, we can do that, you'll have to realize that the fiscal fifteen amount will need to come out of your fund balance. And we'll get to fund balance a little bit later here, and you'll start seeing the impact. This right here is for fiscal sixteen, the year we're in right now. Again, we budgeted $115,000 for this pass-through payment. The payment is going to be, we've done the calculation based upon the existing formula, and the payment will be just a little bit under $85,000. So, what we are proposing here is that we reduce the expenses for fiscal sixteen by $30,000. So, that's the whole long story about that one line. Excuse me. The next line here is sales tax pass-through to Delnar County, and this is the sales tax pass-through agreement based on the Roosevelt annexation. And the original budget estimate was just $10,000 short of what the pass-through actually is going to be, and so we need to increase it by $10,000. Continuing, general fund expenditures, election, we talked about that. Here's the RSTP striping and the EMPG, we talked about those. Excuse me, I'm still fighting this cold. C Street storm drain repairs. As you probably know, we have a drainage problem over there.
Oh, yes, I can't get there. Here. Toss it. Thank you. Excuse me a moment while I just take a lozenge. You know, you did this for me last time I had a cold here, too. You're so good to me.
I'm the mayor that gives.
And a water.
That's a good stretch right there.
Because we're only on like slide three, and there's like fifteen slides.
We're okay with that.
Oh, my goodness.
This is important?
There's really no problem with C Street, we just block off fifth.
We just block it off permanently, right? I think it's been, it was blocked off for some extended period of time in the last storms, and I haven't driven over that way, so I don't know if it's still...
Yeah, it killed my commute. Thanks, Eric.
All kinds of solutions are popping up.
Yes, we got it. Please continue.
So, Mr. Weir has said that for $40,000, he can start repairing that project, phase one of the repairs, and we probably need to think about doing that. My recommendation on that and the coastal access project are that we transfer those monies out of the general fund and into our capital improvement project fund so that the monies are sitting there when the projects are done. So, that's the C Street storm drain repairs. The coastal access project, that's the project that was mostly funded, correct, by a grant. We're coming up $20,000 short on that one, so we need a little bit more money there. Abatement program legal fees. You're very familiar with our abatement program and how we have it on kind of a revolving kind of process where it's recoveries are coming in and reimbursing us for our legal fees. Thing is, we have to put those legal fees out front before we get the recoveries. And to continue with the projects that have already been approved thus far this fiscal year, Mr. Taylor has told me that another $20,000 would be very helpful. Cultural center electricity, $7,000. It's not going to cost us $7,000, it's going to cost $7,000 less than what we'd originally estimated. $146,450 in expenditures. Now, swimming pool. We have some issues with the swimming pool, and I'm sure you've probably heard about some of them. We'll start with staffing. We currently have 5.0 FTEs, that's a full-time equivalent, budgeted for lifeguards at the pool. And we have two, currently two full-time people at the pool. We have a whole lot of trouble keeping lifeguards, hiring lifeguards, training lifeguards, retaining lifeguards. It's a part-time kind of, I don't want to call it a rotating door, but maybe it is almost a rotating door. And we're constantly recruiting, and Matt's had to do trainings quite frequently. I think he used to do one a year, he told me, and now he's doing three or four a year, I mean, five a year. So, it's costing us a lot in staff time for recruitment. HR has to get involved, training has to get involved, you've got to get them certified, and they come in and they work for a little while and then they're gone. One of the issues that's arisen is that opening the pool in the morning is a problem. We need two people there to open it, and if you only have two full-time employees and you're open six days a week, already you can start to see what our problem is with staffing. One of the recommendations that we have to correct that is to establish a temporary, this is a Band-Aid, this is not a fix, this is a temporary solution to a really urgent problem at the pool. We're going to have to both that, that it, we're going to have to discuss the pool when we get into next year's budget cycle in some detail. We're going to have to talk about operations there and what hours you want it to be open and your services that you're providing. You're going to have to talk about all of that when you get into your next budget cycle. But for now, we could establish a temporary seasonal full-time lifeguard position. And when I say, when we say temporary seasonal, that means they would work from six months, it would be April one to September thirty. That, like I said, if we could do that, we could get you to approve that, we can try to find somebody to work full-time in that period of time to help with those opening issues, and then you can talk about how you want your pool operated at mid-year, whether you want to maintain all those numbered hours, or if you want to change the hours or do something different. As far as cost on this, for this fiscal year, what we're proposing is that we reduce the number of FTEs for, that we have in the part-time slots, that 5.0, reduce that to 4.5, and then take that other .5 and put it into the seasonal position. The cost on it are, they're outlined in the staff report. Between April and June, if we were able to hire someone full-time effective April first, April through June thirty would be $12,290. We project some budget savings from unfilled lifeguard positions of $8,523, and a projected savings of not having to budget for that other .5 of $3,767. So, for this fiscal year, it will not cost you anything more. You wouldn't have to appropriate anything more. But like I said, it's a discussion you're going to have to have a next fiscal year. How you can solve it, because this position falls into next year, is when you get to your budget, you can talk about whether you want to continue that position beyond September thirty, and when you prepare the budget, all you do is you'll just budget for fewer part-time lifeguards in order to make your budget work. The other pool issue is the heater. Now, I was told this morning that some of you have already heard about this, and it's pretty important to you.
Felted?
Felted, yes. We've received, we've been having, I understand from Public Works, they've been having some difficulty getting estimates on repairs for this, and we just received those in today, or at least I just got them this morning. Materials cost a $17,000, a labor of about three, and they're looking at $20,000 to get that heater fixed so that our customers at the pool can have some heat in the air. That particular item, you'll notice, was not included in that $146,450. So, if you want to approve that item, you have one of two options. One is that you authorize it to be taken from the general fund balance, or the other option is that you take one of those expenses and swap it out. I mean, you could do that if you wanted. I think that what staff has put in here are all essential and needed, so I kind of wouldn't recommend the second thing, but it's your option. General fund balance. So, our general fund balance at 63015 was $1.7 million. What we are proposing here for the fiscal fifteen, sixteen activity is revenues of 4.7, expenditures of 5.0. And now, remember that that 5.0 includes the monies that were set aside for the fire hall, the 254 you were talking about earlier, that was previously approved to be taken out of fund balance. $12,000, I think, 178 for a compensation study that was previously approved by resolution. And one other little tiny piece. Oh, not so tiny. $49,949 for the SRO officer, but there is on that one a corresponding revenue. All three of those items were previously approved by resolution, so I've just included them in the sum totals here on the expenditure and revenue lines. The swimming pool heater repairs, that $20,000 we just talked about, for net operating results for the year of a minus 286.751. 286.751, just to remind you, is the fire hall, the comp study, the pool, so on and so forth. For a projected ending 63016 fund balance of $1.4 million. How does that number figure into our reserve policy? Well, our total expenditures are, and this number varies a little bit from the number in your staff report, and I apologize for that. I was really sick last week when I handed Kimmy the, what I thought was the final copy of the staff report. So, there's a couple of places where these numbers are going to vary, and I'll point those out to you when we get to them. So, if our total expenditures are 5.0 million, 25% of that is the 1.262. And our projected ending fund balance is 1.4. That means we have a fund balance in excess of our reserve of $186,000. Now, if we decide that we're going to go ahead and pay that fiscal 1415 pass-through to the county, or when we go ahead and pay that, and that property tax in lieu of VLF we talked about earlier, that's going to bring your fund balance in excess of reserves down to $102,000 or $101,000. So, as you move forward in your financial planning, bear in mind that you're getting really close to your general fund reserve, so you don't really have a piggy bank here to like spend extra money on stuff. Housing authority. Just going to run through the total numbers here. I talked in the staff report about what the changes are. In the revenue side, we're actually getting more in from HUD for administrative costs, admin costs, so we have a revenue bump up. On the expenditure side, we had some training that we needed to do, so we have a little bit of a bump up in expenditure side. Our 63015 audited fund balance was $73,916. Our net projection for the year is a positive $14,959 for 63016 projected fund balance of $88,928. I think Megan could probably agree with me when I say that things are moving in a positive direction for the housing authority. HUD has kind of started being a little easier to work with, less fiscally constraining, so the housing authority program is in good shape. Shoreline RV Park, this was another place where the number in the staff report was incorrect. In the staff report on the revenues, there was a table there that had a total of revenue adjustments of $8,500, but if you actually did the math in there, it's actually $12,341. So, that was a typo that wasn't caught. So, now, as you know, in the RV park, they have a negative working capital balance. a negative working capital balance, as at the end of last fiscal year. Majority of that 258,000 is a loan to, to the general fund. It's money they owe the general fund. For that reason, I'm not that worried about that number at this point in time. I think when we get into the rest of this fiscal year and see how our revenues are coming in since the remodel or renovation of the park, I think we're going to find that our revenues are increasing, and that we're going to start whittling away at that amount. Sure.
Did we project out a time for that $200,000?
When we did the loan, we did not, I think what we said was that we would start making the repayments in fiscal '16-'17, because we wanted to see the park operate for a whole year so we could get a better idea on our revenue projections.
Okay. Thank you.
So between the revenue and the expenses, we have a, an adjustment there this, in this period. So our net operations were expected to be a positive 3,507 for 6/30-'16 projected working capital balance of only a negative 254. It's moving in the right I included the sewer fund and the water fund slides here, just to remind you where you are on working capital balance. But there are not any adjustments being requested in either, either of those funds at this time. Sewer fund had a 6/30-'15 audited financial statement, working capital balance. And remember, working capital balance is current assets minus current liabilities. So you take out all of your fixed assets, capital assets, and your long-term debt. You don't include that. She wants, want to know, what, what do I have right now that I can work with? So we had the 3.3 million at 6/30-'15. Our net of operations here is going to be a negative 495. That's primarily due to capital expenditures. You may remember at the beginning of this fiscal year, we had some capital expenditures that we really needed to make, and we asked you to approve a deficit budget for the sewer fund, because we really need to start making some of these improvements. They're major maintenance. They're like, you know, painting your house or re-roofing your house. If you don't do them, the longer you delay them, the more it's going to cost you when you do them. So that's why we adopted the deficit budget. Our 6/30-'16 projected working capital balance is 2.8 million. Water fund. We have a 6/30-'15 working capital balance of 543,000. Our projected net result of operations is a negative $5,584 for an ending 6/30-'16 working capital balance of 537. Gas tax. I don't have a drink, because this is a big one. Okay, we were talking a minute ago about the subvention funds and the agreement with the county. State Controller told us in July of 2014, it was an ineligible expense, so we could not make it. So we stopped making that pass-through payment. In January of 2016, I finally received an audit report, a final report from the SCO. What we had in July of 14 was the Auditor Fieldwork Exit Conference document that said, this is an ineligible expense. What we got in January of 2016 was the SCO said, it's fine, no ineligible expenses, it's okay to make this payment. In our, I think, I can't really comment on their auditing standards, or processes, or procedures, or any of that. But if, the SCO, as you probably know, the State Controller's Office is charged with monitoring the fiscal activities of a city municipality. And if they tell me I can't do something, I won't. If they tell me I can, I will. So what we're talking about here, then, is making this gas tax pass-through payment to the county. Now, in that agreement, the 1991 agreement with the county, there's no dispute over gas tax, as there is with the property tax VLF. That revenue source change, gas tax has been, gas tax still is, maybe always will be, we don't know. So the 14-15 pass-through amount due to the county is 18,519. The 15-'16 pass-through amount due to the county, now this one is an estimate, because we don't have the whole year yet, will be 16,078. At the beginning of this fiscal year, we had budgeted revenues, gas tax revenues of 209,000, and budgeted a, an expenditure of transfer of gas tax funds from the gas tax fund to the general fund to pay for the street maintenance program of 209,000. We have, since the budget was adopted, gotten more information, which we have obtained from Michael Coleman of California Finance. If you look him up, he's considered one of the premier experts on municipal revenue sources. He does, he prepares annual estimates on these sorts of things. And his estimate now for gas taxes is, excuse His estimate now on gas tax for us is 170,000. The net of all of that, revenues minus expenditures, minus the pass-throughs to the county, is a negative 73,000. Now, we have, as of 6/30-'15 in the gas tax fund, we have a fund balance of 92,000. So we can cover that this fiscal year. The problem is going to be next fiscal year, when gas tax revenues continues to decline, and we still have that street maintenance department in our general fund that still needs those monies to pay those expenditures related to street maintenance. You may be looking at a situation, and you'll, you'll work through all of this when you budget workshop this year, but you may be looking at a situation, you're not going to have as much revenue coming into the general fund to cover that program. So you're going to have to figure out how you're going to pay. Because now, after this, you're only going to have a projected 6/30-'16 gas tax fund balance of 18,000. So that's really not enough money to make much of a dent.
fading fast.
I am. I only have two more slides, so we're almost there. Building fund. The building fund and the equipment fund are funds that are called internal service funds, and their revenue sources are the other funds of the city. We had a couple of adjustments that we needed to make. At the beginning of the year, in our fiscal, our original budget, we had budgeted 7,175 for an expenditure for City Hall fire alarm and City Hall rewiring. And we budgeted that erroneously in the equipment fund, and it should have been in the building fund. I didn't say that backwards, did I? It's in the building fund, is where it needs to be. So we need to correct that. We need to make that shift. And we also, you recall, we had some work done on the cultural center. We had a beam that had to be replaced. Once they got in there, it was a bigger job, a bigger job, a bigger job. So we needed additional $10,000 there. So we're asking for an increase in the, my apologies, in the building fund of 17,175, both on the revenue and the expense side. These charges, the revenue, as I said, comes from the other funds. We've done the allocation analysis. The revenues from the other funds, departments and programs, can be absorbed in their current budgets. We don't need to increase any of them to, to make this happen. And then the equipment fund is going down. I may just stop. Seriously, there was a reason I was out most of last week. The equipment fund is going down at 7,0175 that I just spoke of. So then, the request to you guys is twofold. The first one is to direct staff to work with Delhart County to update the, the revenue sharing agreement, based upon the prison annexation. So, can I take them one by one and have them give me that direction now?
Yes, please.
So can I get from the council?
Do we need to get public comment on this?
Oh, do we need to? Maybe I should, should I go ahead and do the resolution then, too? And then I could sit down, and you could do public comment? All right.
Sure.
In your packets that Kimmy gave you, you should find one of these. Did you get a copy of this? Yes.
I did.
Okay, this has been updated from the one that you got in your, in your agenda packet on Friday. And I will tell you what has been updated. And I'll read it, if I may, so we get it in the record. Or not.
I can read it for you.
Sure. Under item one in the table?
Item one, general fund revenue, 146,450, and then the expenditure is 146,450. So wait, that the fiscal year 2015 City of Crescent City annual budget is hereby amended and appropriated in the amount identified below. Do you want me to go over all those funds?
The only change from the one that was in the published packet is the last row, the RV Park Fund. For some reason, that row did not get included in the table.
Okay.
So maybe you could read that, so it's in the record.
Sure. So it'll include all these other funds that we just covered, plus the amended revenues of the RV Park Fund, 12,341, and expenditure of 8,500.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, item two, which is the position control, is attached now here. It erroneously didn't get attached. The only change there from what you had previously approved is that, I think I missed it, the clerk typist. We're going from, on the clerk typist, we're going from an 0.5 to an 0.63 FTEs, changing that position from 20 hours a week to 25 hours a week. And that was included in the expenditure numbers in the housing fund. And then item three there is totally new. It wasn't in the other one.
So that's item three, that $20,000 be expended from the general fund balance to cover costs of repairing the heater at the Fred Endr Municipal Swimming Pool.
Correct. So with those three changes, I would ask you to approve the resolution.
All right. Okay, is there any questions for Ms. Boyd?
Yes, one quick one. I don't want you to stay very long.
You don't want me coughing on you some more?
The property tax in lieu, when we're dealing with a 2014-15 draw, as well as an additional amount for 2015-'16, are we really talking about $114,000 coming out of our general fund?
Actually, together, they're roughly 85,000 each. So you're talking more like 170 altogether.
170,000 that we hadn't expected to come out?
We had budgeted it in 14-15, but we didn't spend it. And so at the end of the year, when you found you had revenues in excess of expenditures, that 115 was part of the reason, because you didn't spend it, or the city didn't spend it. So that contributed to your general fund balance at the end of fiscal '15. In fiscal '16, we did budget for it. It has been, already been included in the budget. However, we had budgeted 115,000. So what I'm asking you to do is reduce that to the 85,000, which is the projected amount.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe this could be a Martha question, though, is if we want to clear up all that we owe the county, what do we need to do? We need to pay the property taxes, the 18,519 and 16,000.
Those are gas taxes.
Oh, the gas taxes. We can pay those without doing any kind of amendments to any agreements.
Correct.
But we need to do new agreements for the other.
Correct. We currently have an agreement which authorizes and obligates the city to pay the gas tax. We don't with respect to the property taxes in lieu of VLF.
Okay. So we want to pay the gas tax. We could do that right away. And, but we do have to get a, a new agreement for the
Property tax in lieu of VLF.
Property taxes in lieu of, okay.
Just to clarify also, the gas tax amount is included in the resolution for the changes in the gas tax fund. So if you approve this resolution, you're approving to pay the gas tax portion.
Then that will direct staff to do that. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Told you it wouldn't take very much time at all.
No. And again, sorry for all the coughing.
I hope you're feeling better. And it was a really good thorough report.
Yes.
I really feel that we need to get our accounts cleared with the county as quickly as possible.
Sure.
And that I think it's a really good idea that we get staffing for the pool. So I think it's a, a good fiscal idea, and it'll be good for morale, and, and good for Matt. But it'll be good for the pool, too. So I like that idea. And I, it's a long time coming. We've been discussing it for quite a while.
Not that I, not that I understand the, the budget process fully, but Emily has made it certainly a lot easier for a rookie councilman to, to understand this process. Thanks.
And remember, it's government. Just add three zeros to it.
Okay. Oh, do you have to do public comments? Do you want to do public comment?
Yeah.
Should I do public comment?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to do. Is there any public comment on our resolution to amending our fiscal year operating capital improvement budgets? Any public comment on this? Any? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring you back to the council. Is there any further discussion and/or motions?
I'd like for us to establish consensus to direct staff to establish the new revenue sharing agreement with the county as requested by Ms. Boyd. We got consensus to get staff
Do we have consensus to direct staff?
If we adopt the resolution, I think that that's, no, that's
The resolution doesn't address the subvention funds.
Okay. That's what I was asking. That's what I was asking about earlier.
It addresses the gas taxes, but not
Okay. Yeah, I think it's really critical that we
Mr. Knight, I believe we have consensus to help direct staff to get that agreement together.
Thank you, Mary Council.
Thank you. Okay. The resolution, there's three items on it.
I'll move to adopt Resolution Number 2016-06, amending fiscal year 2015-'16 operating and capital improvement budgets of the City of Crescent City.
Well, second amendment.
Does that include all the new amendments on it? It's all part of the resolution?
It's all on the resolution.
Yeah, it's the resolution as presented this evening.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-Temen score?
Yes.
Mayor Gassner?
Yes, thank you. And that passes unanimously. And Mr. Hildenbrandt, I think I might have a suggestion for your pool people. Can you hand that down?
Mr. Mayor, do we need to, or, City Manager, do we, do we need to provide direction regarding the employment and ideas that were presented to us tonight, or is, do you want to, I mean, it's not included in this. The 20,000 here is just the fixing, the, is just fixing the heater. I mean, we were, an idea was floated about a, a part
Oh, yes.
Temporary
Seasonal, full-time person.
Yes, that's included by adopting
In the, in the position control, it's added in here.
Yes.
Yes.
No, number three is the heater.
Number two, Emily mentioned the clerk typist. It also includes the seasonal lifeguard, I believe. If you look under pool, it says pool manager, then relief, then lifeguard part-time. You go across, it was five. It's minus one, so it's 4.5. And then underneath it, lifeguard seasonal. It was zero. We're adding a point five, so then it's a point
Good deal. Thank you.
All right. Okay, that concludes our agendized items. We're now on the city council items. Is there any legislative matters? Is there any legislative matters? No, see no legislative matters. We'll go on to City Manager Report. Is there any City Manager Report?
And would this include the discussion of, consider the appointment?
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to tee that up. So I'm not aware of the Redwood National Park making any direct contact with the Crescent City regarding their plans, but I was at a Board of Supervisors meeting, and I understand there was a two-by-two meeting and a report out of that with the supervisors and the park, that they, Redwood Parks is planning on moving their facility from the property that we provided to them back in the day, and that is very concerning to your staff and likely to the Mayor and Council also. So we would like to insert ourselves in that conversation by having the council and mayor direct your staff to coordinate, and we're recommending a two-by-two-by-two, because we would like to have county involved, so.
So, you know, just to recap, that is, basically, the grumbling is that the state and Redwood National Parks are thinking of moving their?
Visitors.
Their visitor's center and their offices out to Hiuchi, from its current location on K Street.
I don't know that they're gonna move all their offices, but the visitor's?
At least the visitor's center. And we were concerned, as a City Council, that we were not consulted on this at all, moving that out of our jurisdiction. So I've been talking to, not, especially the mayor, Pro Tem, and others, and I was thinking that I would appoint for this two-by-two-by-two Mr. Inskore, and if Mr. Holly can make the time for that, I think those two definitely would be good for this two-by-two to get the discussions going on about why there's this motivation to move it, and also why wasn't the city consulted on it. Okay, anything else from the City Manager?
No, other than the fact that, thank you, Mayor and Council again, other than the fact that I'd like to just take a minute to thank your Public Works Director for all of the many good projects he's bringing forward to the council, and then to go even further, why he's juggling those projects to take the time to find additional grant dollars to actually help get them built, and so I'm pretty impressed, and I want to thank him publicly. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very?
And that concludes my comments.
And I was gonna say, but she disappeared. Yes, that unfortunately, our finance director, Emily Boyd, is going on in the bigger and better past years, and her last day will be the 24th, which is a Wednesday. I thought it was kind of strange, but I guess she's making sure that she dots her i's and crosses her t's on the finance.
Gets passed last January 3rd.
That's right. Before she gets?
You have to go around.
So I actually, I gotta talk to her. I don't know where she's going or what's happening, so. She will be missed, because she has helped getting our finances definitely in order since she's been here, and has been a definite help. I hope that our former City Manager didn't poach her from us.
He did.
So, because Galt apparently was looking for a finance director. I have to give a nasty grab to Mr. Palazzo if that was?
He's already gotten one.
So, okay, reports, concerns, referrals. Thank you very much, Mr. Knight. Council travel training reports. You guys want to make this quick?
Yeah.
All right, who wants to go first?
I'll go.
All right, thank you.
Oversight board was canceled. It's in a local transport committee meeting. Taught a little bit of firefighter one academy this last weekend, and that's about it for committee reports.
Thank you. Let's just go down the line. Mr. Inskore?
I attended the visitor bureau meeting and met with a number of constituents. I probably had as many meetings just with public people this time as any given two-week period, so that was, that was good. It was engaging.
What was it about?
Well, we talked a lot of sewer.
Oh, there you go.
And it was, it was amazing that there was as many people who were as engaging and receptive to the process once they heard this process, once they didn't just hear, "Do you want to see 20% increase on your rates?" So that was good. I do want to say two things. I am, I am so thrilled with our staff across the board. The staff we have working for us at Crescent City is just amazing. I mean, from whoever's mowing the grass at Beachfront Park, all the way up through to our new interim City Manager, I think we are very, very fortunate to have the people work for us to do, and it's an honor to serve on this side of the dais. And with that, I also want to just spend just a second and say I greatly, greatly value the work that Emily Boyd has done since she has been here. I mean, just to give you an idea, Kathy and I were giggling about this at City Hall today. This city didn't even have a petty cash policy. I mean, Ms. Boyd brought to the table the ability to cut through a lot of things that had not been done for a lot of years, and address those, bring them to us, as Councilmember Short mentioned, in a very organized manner, and allow us to put those things in the process and implement them. And she has to be very much commended for that, and she's going to be greatly missed. But with that said, she has laid a foundation for the next person that will be an excellent member of our staff to be able to step in and continue us on a path that she has very much laid a foundation for. And so I'm very, very thankful for all of our staff, but especially tonight, given that this was her last meeting, and I think it's ironic that she had to spend as much time talking to us as she did. But Emily, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Holly.
Thank you. I, too, would like to thank Emily, where is she here? I hope, I wish her luck wherever she's going. I think she needs to listen to her body and know that leaving's making her sick. But, but she will be missed, and I wish her luck. I attended the Transportation Commission meeting on the 11th. There was a Valentine's, kind of a dance at the Mason, Masonic Hall, and that is really a nice facility. I don't know if everybody's been in that new facility, but it's a beautiful room. And on Thursday, we'll be attending the Last Chance Grade Stakeholders Meeting that hasn't been meeting for several months, so it'll be good to get back together and readdress where we are. There will be a dance with the high school stage band at the Elks Lodge, and Tsunami Swing playing at the Elks Lodge on the 19th, that's Friday. And so that should be a fun thing for the community to do. And so that's probably about it for now.
Thank you. Ms. Murray?
I'll be brief as I can be. On Thursday the 4th, we had another Airport Joint Powers Authority meeting. The 11th, I, too, attended the last, the Local Transportation Commission meeting, and we now have a new chair and vice chair. David Finnegan is our chair, and Councilmember Short is our vice chair, so congratulations to him. And over the weekend, I attended my daughter Lauren's engagement party, so that was a lot of fun. And then I have had correspondence from Robert Durago, and I believe all of you have too, about the marijuana ordinance, so I just wanted to report out on that, and he's asking us to bring that back. And we do have the Last Chance Stakeholders Meeting on Thursday, and then Councilmember Inskore, or Mayor Pro Tem and I have a healthcare district two-by-two-by-two on Friday coming up. So those are what's coming up for me. Oh, and then we also have a special Airport Joint Powers Authority meeting on Thursday the 25th, and the Redwood Empire Division is having their first quarterly meeting in Willets on Friday the 26th, which I will be attending, and thank you for allowing me to be there.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I could have?
Sure.
Question for possibly Mr. Knight, Mr. Taylor. I drive past Glenn's on Third a lot. Is there something the city can do to aid him with opening? I don't, I don't know the owner. I don't know what the situation is. I don't know if there's some way we could enter into a contract to get him open. I'm not suggesting that we slide back on our standards, but I'm just thinking that if he had an issue with the bakery, could he open the restaurant side with the drawn-up contract saying that he would get the bakery work done in a certain amount of time, or the other way around? I see it just sitting there. I know he's done a lot of work. I was just wondering if there's anything the city can do to help.
I mean, I wouldn't worry, I don't want to speculate on it right now, but it'd be good if he came and talked to us, because I don't even know exactly where he's at with this project now. I mean, he comes forward, and he kind of goes away and comes back. So I mean, we can reach out to him, too, to talk to him and see if there's something we can?
That'd be good.
I think that'd be nice.
Yeah, reach out to him.
Yeah, based on this conversation, we'll reach out to him and see if there's anything we can do.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nothing, as usual. No, no, actually, you don't have control yet, sir. Even though you want to push me out of my chair. I know you do. You really don't want this chair. So I actually, for Redwood Coast Transit Authority, we had a phone conference where we went through the reviews of RFPs for the new manager, similar to what Mr. Weir went through on that, that one project he got grilled on tonight. And so, you know, I was, I was kind of empathetic to his situation there. That was one of the things. And then also, I actually had a solid waste management meeting today. You remember that one?
I did. I remember it here.
Yeah, it was right here before this. And we welcomed our new member, Chris Howard. And, oh, hey, it's past nine o'clock. I think I can go till 9:30. And then, you know, that's pretty much. And then tomorrow, we actually have a Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting to be able to go over some of the stuff and see if we can get some interviews going on these people, so.
So what you're saying is you've been sitting at this desk for about six hours?
Yeah, it's my second home here, and I'm ready to leave, and so with no further business being before this council, we are going to adjourn until our next regularly scheduled meeting, March 7th, which should be another fun one and quick, 2016, 5:00 p.m. See you all there.